Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. I will call the meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. Welcome. Let's start with a round of introductions. I'm Nancy Wise, Commissioner and Chair.
Pat Malone, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Xander Ogero, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Vance Craven, County Council.
And we will do introductions in the room and then move to introductions online. Who in the room would like to introduce themselves?
Lynn McKee.
And anyone else in the room would like to introduce themselves? All right, and we will move to online. If you would like to introduce yourself online, please unmute and do so.
Corey Grogan, Benton County Public Information Officer.
Amanda Makepeace.
Go ahead, Amanda.
Amanda Makepeace, Administrative Assistant.
Lori Koppenrath, DLR Group.
Hi.
Samyam Parathi, Facilitator.
Hi, April Holland, Public Health Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Darren Nichols, Benton County's Community Development Director.
Peggy Lynch, Benton County Citizen.
All right, anyone else would like to introduce themselves online? All right, we will move to announcements. Are there any announcements? None, other than I'm happy we're all here today. Happy Tuesday. That takes us to reviewing and approving the agenda. We do have one change, which is removing item 8.3. And we will discuss that, I believe, on December 20th. And with that, I will consider the agenda approved, and we will move on to comments from the public. I will take public comment from the room first and then move to anyone online. So I see we have a couple people who would like to comment. So first on my list, I have Greg Storms, and then I see at least one other person in the audience. Greg, please come up to the front here and please introduce yourself and speak into the microphone. And you can have up to three minutes for a public comment.
My name is Greg Storms, and I reside at 1785 Northwest Arthur Circle in Corvallis. I've been a resident here since 1983. I'm a retired CPA and I own my own business for 25 of those years here in the area. I've been following the landfill work groups via Zoom. And I want to thank the Commissioners for making that possible. It's been very educational and gives you a deeper understanding of the complexities of the issues involved. One thing that's come up in the work group that I would like to emphasize to the Commissioners is that they need to get expert outside advice whenever dealing with Republic. It's not a mom and pop operation anymore like it used to be years ago. And this is a Fortune 500 company. The majority, not the majority shareholder, but a 34% shareholder is Bill Gates via his Cascade Investments LLC. So when you're dealing with people like that, you need advice at that level. And I think this is especially important going into the end life of this landfill, which I think from this point, we can see the beginning of that starting to happen. These decisions that are made at this point are going to affect residents of Benton County for decades. And you definitely want to make sure you're making the right decisions there. That's all I've got.
Thank you so much. All right, and then I saw one hand from the audience. Joel, come on forward. Please introduce yourself and speak into the microphone. You can have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joel Guyer. I'm a resident of Benton County and a member of the Disposal Site Advisory Committee, known as DSAC, and the related body known as SWAC. I am invoking First Amendment protection for my statements here in a connection with my service on DSAC and SWAC. I believe that Benton County is in violation of state law by blocking DSAC from fulfilling our mandatory duties under state law. ORS 459.325 states clearly, "The committee shall prepare an annual report summarizing the local citizens' concern and the manner in which the owner or operator is addressing those concerns." By staff acting under your direction, DSAC has been blocked from preparing such a report for 2021 and is also being blocked from work on one for 2022. My request to correct this breach of law and fulfill our duty to the people of Benton County and the State of Oregon have been blocked by staff citing your direction. Staff asserts that, but there is no timeline, so it doesn't matter. But the word "annual" has a very clean, clear meaning in English. It means yearly. Not only are we missing these mandatory annual reports from 2021 and 2022, I can find no record that one was ever approved by DSAC for 2019, 2018, 17, 16, or 15. One for 2020 seems to be the only one in over seven years. The same statute states, "The report shall be considered by the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality in issuing and renewing a solid waste permit." DEQ may have been negligent in checking for existence of these reports when they reviewed the when they renewed the landfill's permit in July of 2020. But accidental negligence is less bad than continuing to block compliance with state law. This problem arises out of deference to the so-called Benton County Talks Trash Process. You have effectively replaced a longstanding committee mandated by state law to protect the interests of the people of our county as a host site for a regional landfill. With an, you've replaced it with an ad hoc process that does not fulfill the same mandate. When first proposed, this process was hopeful. It suggested to allow a chance for broad community discussion on all things related to solid waste in our county. But increasingly, it seems to be focused on giving Republic Services, a Nerzona-based corporation, opportunities to influence a future land use decision in our county. Meanwhile, established forums for community members to establish concerns and have them addressed are being shut down. There are other aspects of this ad hoc process that are fraught. One person who raised concerns about the propriety of this process for land use decisions as early as September 29th was publicly dismissed. Last week, you received a letter from an Oregon land use attorney who the facilitator tried to recruit to participate as part of your charge B.
Thank you. Please wrap up.
Yes. When an ad hoc process creates conflicts with state law and even threats of dismissal for those to speak your conscience, it's time to take a second look. Please allow DSAC members to fulfill our obligation of their state law. And thank you for your attention, and I will see you this evening to talk about earthquake safety.
Thank you, Mr. Guyer. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to provide public comment today? Seeing none in the room, is there anyone online who would like to provide public comment for just three minutes? If so, please unmute yourself. Hearing none, we will move into the work session. First up, item 4.1, Recognition of Service with Lynn McKee, the Director of Natural Areas, Parks, and Events. And the Board of Commissioners has a plaque that we would like to present to Lynn for her, all of her good service. What would we like to say a few words first, or?
Please.
Commissioners?
Sure. Go ahead, as liaison, do you want to speak first?
Well, it came as a little bit of a surprise that Lynn was leaving us at the middle of this month, and I've enjoyed being the liaison from Board of Commissioners to the Fair Board through some interesting times and several years without a regular fair, a lot of in football, what is that, calling audibles? We had a plan, and now we will come up with a completely different plan. I remember must have been what we did in, for the fair in '21 where there was no regular fair, but there was the 4H show and auction. And I think that was a good example of being creative, making the best out of the COVID situation. And I remember there was some consternation on the part of the 4H folks. Oh, there won't be a fair, and this is not good. And about two days into it, oh, there's no regular fair. This is wonderful. We have the run of the whole place. Can we do it like this every year? So that was one thing that comes to mind. The merging of natural areas and parks and events was, I thought, handled really well and is serving us well at this point. So that there is somebody warming up Jesse Otte can act in the at least interim capacity while we do a search for a new director. So I appreciate Lynn's efforts to make that as smooth a transition. I think it was a good idea and handled well and sooner than we thought. We're getting significant benefits out of that change. So I really appreciate your flexibility and creativity, getting us through some challenging times while at the same time trying to make improvements, making improvements in the facilities, whether it's the kitchen in the auditorium or some continued improvements in that facility and also planning for the future, the turning the exhibit hall slash arena into a real exhibit hall. And at this point, we have plans, so and now it's figure out how to execute on those plans. But really appreciate your, your efforts and your smiling in the face of adversity and the challenges that you've had to deal with these last few years, and we will miss you.
It's with sadness, Lynn, that I see you go. I was a liaison to the Fair Board when Lynn was hired. And the general reaction was, what, someone with a background in the arts is going to take over the fair? Fairgrounds? What's that all about? But as it turns out, given your expertise in facilities management and curating, those skills were transferable to curating people too. So basically, you've done a great job balancing out the different constituencies at the fairground. And the whole operation has been significantly professionalized in many different ways, not the least of which is the facilities planning that Commissioner Malone spoke to. So thank you for bringing us a long ways forward and for keeping the fair vibrant and local and a major community event. And for the role you've played in the merger of the Natural Areas and Parks Department with Fair. As Commissioner Malone mentioned, that's provided synergy and resources that neither department had before. And it was a wise move and under your leadership and Lori's before alongside you on the initial days. I think that's been a very positive development. And I wish you all the very best in the next adventures ahead. Hope you won't be a stranger.
Very good. Yes, so Lynn, I remember one of the first conversations we got to have because as a new commissioner, I came in in the height of COVID, so everything was virtual still. So one of the first face-to-face interactions we got to have was on the Starker Bus doing the Forestry Tour. And I had a really good time. I thought it went really well, and I was like, hey, this lady's awesome. Like, I'm glad she's working for Benton County. So you will be missed. Whatever, what everybody else has said. Attorney Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioner. So Lynn, this is really bittersweet for me. You know, we've been on a journey together over the last five and a half, six years. And thanks to you, that journey has been exciting, and it's been full of accomplishments. And what I think what you have done over the course of the last six years, I think the word awesome comes to mind. And the Commissioners have listed some of those things that you've worked on. But one thing we haven't talked about is really a personality that you bring to our leadership team and our organization. And your sense of positivity, endless positivity, is something that I'm absolutely going to miss very, very much. And I've enjoyed thoroughly working with you, and you have advanced us so far in the last five years. And the Commissioners have mentioned a number of those things that you have done, so I won't repeat that. But you know, for me, it's about the positive attitude and the can-do attitude. And in the adversity of COVID, you were still able to help our organization focus on COVID by contributing employees to our Emergency Operations Center. And at the same time, trying to keep the fair grounds alive and our operations in the parks alive and being maintained and moving forward. So I think one of the things that most people don't recognize is really the countless hours that you have contributed to the county while outside of a normal 40-hour work week. And you and I talked on a number of occasions about that over time. And I just want to thank you for the tireless hours, the nights, the weekends, the calls or the weekends reserving events and activities occurring out at the fairgrounds that needed guidance or assistance. And then, of course, some of the more significant challenges relating to our campgrounds that you oversee. And so it is not an eight-to-five job, and you rose to the occasion, and you had tremendous stamina in the face of adversity and perseverance. And I just want to thank you, and I'm really excited because for us, it's the sad day, but for you, it's an exciting chapter. Your next step in your career and in your life. So I'm very happy about that. Happy for you, and we'll miss you tremendously.
Now that you're weepy, we'll get you up in front of a camera.
So we would like to present you with a service award for six years of service in grateful appreciation for dedicated public service during an honorable career. And, oh, excuse me, more than six years to the residents of Benton County. Very good. So we will come up front here, and I believe is someone going to take a picture? All right, with that, we will move on to item 4.2, Justice System Improvement Program Bond Measure Package deliberations. We have with us Nick Kurt, the Jacep Manager, Lori Koppenrath from DLR Group, and Chris Edmonds from Coastline. As well as Rick Cragor with Finance. Welcome. Perfect.
It doesn't want to go out.
So Nick, can I ask you how the basketball tournament went?
Oh, it was a lot of fun. Pineville was sunny and beautiful. There's a lot of snow up there.
Excellent.
Yeah, it was nice to get over the, over the mountains for a day and a night.
The travel was fine.
What's that?
The travel was fine.
It was, yeah.
Just a point of clarification before I begin. Are we providing time for questions from the audience in addition to the public time you just had, or?
No, that was not my question. But members of the public are always able to reach out to us individually, emails, phone calls, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners Wise, Ogero, Anne Malone, County Administrator Joe Kirby, County Council, Vance Cronie. Rick and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to present on the Justice System Improvement Program today. I, we are joined virtually as well by Lori Koppenrath from DLR Group, as well as Chris Edmonds from Coastline. Brenda Downham had our Communications Consultant for Jacep, had hoped to be here today, but she is serving on jury duty. Before I dive into the presentation, I would like to just take a moment to reflect on this moment. This is the beginning of your Jacep Bond Measure deliberations, which will extend through the month of December and likely into early January. But it's also the culmination of more than five years of work, which has involved many, many contributors along the way, more than there is time to thank today. However, I do want to acknowledge that every department in the county has been involved and contributed and helped us get to this point today. It is truly a program that spans all of our, all of our county departments and expertise along with numerous stakeholders, committees, and consultants who continue to work on behalf of Jacep today. But this is also a beginning as it is an end. From a facilities perspective, several of the projects under the Jacep umbrella are already underway. And that includes a mental health crisis center that is being built downtown. A community safety and justice campus site that has been acquired. And on it, currently, a new courthouse and offices for the District Attorney are being built. These are all underway now. If the bond passes, the Jacep bond measure passes in May 2023, potentially, we will add to that list of facilities funding for expanded mental health and homelessness services facilities, a correctional facility, and an emergency operations center and sheriff's office. But that's only part of the equation because we, Jacep is also about programs, and several are also already underway, including crisis outreach under our core program, expanded pretrial services, which are designed to keep pretrial individuals out of jail, as well as training for law enforcement, specialized training for law enforcement when they interact with individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities as part of their crisis intervention training. So I just want to acknowledge that many elements of Jacep are underway. With that, I'd like to remind everybody that our objective today, Rick's and my objective today, is Uh, with that, I'd like to remind everybody that our objective today, Rick's and my objective today is really to set the stage for deliberations, provide you with information today. Um, there's no specific questions that we intend to answer or address today, but we are going to provide a fair amount of information and want to answer your questions as well as any questions from the audience. I think as I go through the presentation, as well as Rick, we'll we'll pause at the end of each section, just to see if there's any questions and then and then continue on. Well, it could be me. All right, let's begin with a little bit of background. So I mentioned, uh, this is the culmination of five years of work. Uh, in twenty seventeen, uh, the commissioners uh, contracted for a uh, a system-wide study of the county's justice system. That was conducted by consultant CGL and managed by Greater Oregon Behavioral Health. Uh, under the project management of Ari Basil Wagner. Uh, the assessment was published in twenty nineteen, uh, and it included really three proposed models to potentially adopt. Uh, one focused on prevention, another on accountability. And then what we called the best practices model, which was really a combination of prevention, treatment and accountability. Uh, the Board of Commissioners adopted the best practices model. And this, and that really led to our, drove our vision and goals. Along the way, there was an extensive amount of of public engagement, uh, as well as qualitative surveys, which which drove that entire process. Next slide. The vision I mentioned was one of a balance of treatment and accountability. And our goal was to build an equitable, effective and safe justice system for all of the county community. Um, I think we've had a number of discussions around both equitability and and the effectiveness of the system and really the uh, the the community safety and justice campus portion of this, which is very much all-inclusive of the facilities of many of the facilities in the justice system, really deliver on that effective operations and deliver on that 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 goal. Next slide, please. So following the assessment, uh, we moved into uh, planning and conceptual design. Uh, we hired a design and engineering, engineering firm, DLR Group. And as I mentioned, we're joined here today by Lori Kop and Rath, who's and the principal on that project. Uh, I, I, I picked up the reins at that point about two and a half years ago or more. Uh, and um, uh, with DLR Group, we worked through a essentially a six-step process uh, that allowed us to uh, define a number of of deliverables, um, for conceptual designs, site selection, uh, space planning, as well as a site master plan. Uh, once again, there was extensive public engagement and both quantitative and qualitative surveys. Um, that six-step process I mentioned ended up spanning three years. Originally, it was supposed to be a year. Uh, but COVID threw a bit of a wrinkle in that, uh, and we had to pivot and we did. And I'm very thankful that DLR Group was willing and able to keep its entire team intact through that and uh, process. It's, it's, I can't tell you what a difference it has made in terms of where we are today, the quality of the work, the relationships. So really fortunate to have that outcome. Next slide, please. This is the six-step process that DLR really defined for conceptual design. I'm not going to go into it in detail. It's difficult to read, but um, I, I think an important point is that uh, the public engagement process really was extensive and spanned um, many, many months, actually over two years. I'll talk more about that in in a minute here. Next slide. In terms of our findings from conceptual design. First off, Emergency Operations Center. Current area is seven hundred and seventy-eight square feet in the basement of the correctional facility. It's subject to flooding. I think we learned an incredibly valuable uh, and practical experience when COVID hit. Um, ending up, ended up moving four times. Um, and it really showed the uh, the inadequacy of our current emergency operations center. I was actually part of the initial team that met for, I think, two or three days. Uh, before we we moved over to the city's EOC and then moved over to Kalapuya. And just to put it in perspective, when we finally moved into Kalapuya, we occupied uh, almost twenty thousand square feet, half the building, when we had fully ramped up and staffed. Um, that's, that's really a good example of how undersized our emergency operations center is.
Nick, I would just like to interject real quick. You had mentioned that that seven hundred and seventy-eight square feet uh, is in the basement of the correctional facility. It's actually located in the basement of the law enforcement building, just for clarity purposes.
I appreciate that clarification, Joe, and surprised nobody else started laughing. So yes, it is very much in the basement of the sheriff's office. Sheriff's Office built fifty years ago, planned for twenty years of growth. So we've exceeded that by two and a half times. Uh, but you know, many people have heard it's bursting at the seams. Just to to put that in perspective. Uh, the city recently conducted its own capital planning study analysis. And if, i- if, in one of their scenarios, um, they would like to occupy just for the um, the police department, the entire building, plus add on another seven thousand square feet. Uh, so that's taking all of the space that we occupy, which is about eleven thousand, and add on seven thousand. That's what their space needs are just for uh, Corvallis Police Department, not including the sheriff's office. So to say it's bursting at the seams is really an understatement. Um, finally, I know all of you and any of the audience probably have heard us talk about our jail, also built for fifty years. Um, important point, it was designed as a, as a temporary holding facility. Uh, what that means is, um, individuals were intended to be held there for two or three days before they were uh, arraigned. And then they were to be transported to a five-county regional facility. Uh, unfortunately, that regional facility never came to fruition. Uh, but our facility was really not designed uh, for rehabilitation. Uh, it was not designed to treat individuals with mental health or substance abuse uh, challenges. It was simply meant to hold or warehouse people for a very short period of time and then transport it to a facility that would offer those services. So not only is it old, but it was never designed for um, uh, to achieve many of our objectives. And so want to underscore that, uh, because of its inadequate size, our solution has been to uh, rent jail beds out of county. Uh, which is a bit like shooting yourself in the foot when it comes to the revolving door of jail. Uh, we are removing people from uh, their support environments, the people they know, the people that can help them transition back into the community. Um, it does not, does not help us lower recidivism. Um, and as well, that very small size of our current jail uh, leads us to excessively use site and release, uh, which then compounds with failure to appear in court. Uh, so we really have a, a system of inadequacies here that are compounding on themselves uh, and have created and really an untenable situation. Next slide, please. Alright, so let me just pause there relative to kind of the background information. Any, any questions from commissioners?
Just a comment, uh, I appreciate towards the beginning of your talk, talking about facilities and then moving right into programs. I think uh, especially with the bond measure, it's, it's easy to talk about buildings and square footage and cost and, uh, but they're just buildings. Uh, and I, I think that that was a nice sentence or paragraph or whatever it was to make sure those two things were connected.
Yeah, I think one of the most impactful things that was shared with me, well, two, two things actually. Uh, when I first began managing the program, I met with um, the sheriff's office leadership team. And and you could see it in their eyes that they were genuine, genuinely frustrated with warehousing adults in custody. Um, and they, they want to build a correctional facility. Uh, and and I heard this as well when we, uh, Commissioner Weiss and Malone and I traveled up to Norcore. My expectation is Commissioner Ojuro has heard this as well. Um, it, it's terribly, um, uh, I guess maybe demoralizing to watch individuals, you know, be released, come back, be released, come back. Um, it was clear to me the sheriff's office genuinely wants to have programmatic space for rehabilitation. Genuinely wants to be able to help individuals with mental health or substance abuse. Um, you know, even if, even if we heard at Norcore, even if you can extend, you know, you're not gonna, you're not gonna abolish recidivism, but even if you can extend it and and you know, maybe you don't see somebody for three or four months versus a month, that's a win. Uh, and you continue that cycle. Uh, and at one point, hopefully, you never see the individual again because they're doing well in society. Uh, the other point I wanted to share was just a comment from one of our community advisory committee members, um, you know, who said, yeah, you know, the, the facilities are just the, the delivery vehicle for the outcomes. It's the outcomes. Uh, but you have to have the, the, the building blocks to do it. And that's, that's what the bond measure is about. Alright, next slide. Well, I just mentioned Community Advisory Committee. Um, and we've actually had, uh, Community Advisory has met uh, on two occasions. Roughly fifteen members, a diverse group of stakeholders. Uh, we first met from December twenty twenty until June of twenty twenty-one. That was really focused on conceptual design. Uh, and then more recently, uh, we reconvened in July and and continued to meet. Uh, and this is really um, uh, listening to and sharing information relative to creating a bond package. Um, and so really fortunate to have this, this group. Um, we'll meet this coming Thursday and then one more time in January. Uh, really fortunate to have them involved. Uh, they've been, you know, instrumental in sharing their perceptions. Uh, it really is a diverse group, uh, with different ideas, different opinions. Uh, we've tried to create a really welcoming environment. Uh, and it's, uh, it's been valuable in terms of information that I've been able to share uh, both with the Jacep executive team as well as with you uh, over the months. Next slide, please. We've also had a technical advisory committee, uh, which was comprised in, which composed of county, city, uh, Oregon Judicial Department and at-large subject matter experts, including from OSU. Um, that, uh, that team met throughout conceptual design, uh, paralleling the first Community Advisory Committee. I actually had one individual who was serving on both. Um, and so that we could kind of have a continuity and flow of information. Uh, again, their focus was on the conceptual design and site selection. Uh, and again, uh, very important sounding board uh, for Jacep operations and executive teams as well as yourselves. Next slide, please. Well, that was the end of committees. Uh, I'll keep going on community engagement and then pause after that for questions. So public engagement has been an emphasis of the Justice System Improvement Program, uh, dating all the way back to the assessment. Uh, I think, uh, the, the public engagement aspect is, was one of the shortcomings of previous bond measures. Uh, and so, uh, we've strived, have striven very hard to uh, uh, involve the public, share information, listen to them, uh, with each phase of the Justice System Improvement Program. Um, in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, we had no less than twenty-six small group uh, conversations and meetings. I'm not going to read through the list here, but it was extensive and diverse. Um, as well as two, uh, two virtual community forums. Uh, the purpose of those meetings was to, one, was to share our objectives of the Justice System Improvement Program, share conceptual designs, uh, which included site and to get feedback on the historic courthouse. Uh, so this is where we really began to um, explain uh, Jacep as a whole to the public. Many of those slides are still being used today. Um, and also shared, uh, actually winnowed our conceptual designs down to four, uh, which were also site-specific. Next slide, please. Uh, in terms of key takeaways, uh, from that first round of, of community engagement. Um, transportation impacts on neighborhoods were, uh, important. Uh, there were concerns about flooding, infrastructure capacity, gateway locations, impacts to gateways. Uh, certainly, economics came up. Um, uh, safety and property valuation, uh, near a correctional facility was, was a topic of discussion. Uh, equity issues related to site geography and as well as justice system data. And then, um, you know, some, some lack of trust, uh, in county financial decisions. Um, I think uh, some of that feedback has led to us being so transparent about all of the financials related to Jacep. And you're going to see that uh, here in a few minutes when, when Rick shares some of those with you. So, um, we, we heard concerns and we, um, listened and responded. Next slide, please. So our second round of community engagement occurred in twenty twenty-two and and through current and will into, into early next year. Uh, really, our objectives were to share information on the proposed facilities and how they will impact outcomes, uh, both in crisis response and the justice system, as well as some urgency operations. Um, and to field and answer questions, uh, really, uh, as I mentioned, the, the purpose now is to uh, align on a, a bond measure package. And so we have turned to the community for input along the way. Um, next slide, please. In terms of small group presentations, um, currently, we have completed eleven, uh, with six more scheduled. This is a, a dynamic uh, sheet here that changes daily. Uh, so this may already be out of date, uh, but and then I know we have another eight additional, uh, that we're working on. Uh, so, uh, again, this will continue into, into the new year. Uh, these have really been an opportunity for feedback, uh, from stakeholder groups prior to finalizing the bond measure. Um, in all, I think we've reached out to just under forty, forty groups, um, including municipalities, nonprofit organizations, uh, and and those, uh, groups that advocate for historically marginalized communities. Next slide, please. Terms of forums, I'm breaking these out in this case because they're a little more extensive. We've had uh, two forums today, one focused on mental health, another on community safety. Uh, we are contemplating a third forum possibly towards the end of January or early February. which will be really be an opportunity to share and highlight the decisions we we reached over this month and 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 into early January. So it'll be a culmination of all of our work and summarizing the decisions we've made and the benefits that we see. Next slide, please. Key takeaways, there have been concerns and questions about bond amount, funding sources, impact to taxpayers, taxpayers, as well as operational funding. We will talk about some of these today and we have along the way as well. Very much interest in diversion and upstream strategies to reduce incarceration as well as related to law enforcement training and response. How we've prior prioritized the facilities under consideration, how they fit together. Validating improved outcomes, metrics and data, still more work to be done on that. And then really a focus on mental health, both in and out of the justice system. Next slide, please. Just a couple of comments that Brenda Downham picked from the many and shared, which I think really resonated. I appreciate the county's effort to minimize the bond ask on our community by creative ways to secure other sources of funding. It seems this bond addresses a broader scope of our community's concerns and needs for mental health, the safety, the crime, the substance abuse, to homelessness, to proper care of citizens in custody. I certainly never could have said it so well there, but I do want to emphasize that both from work from staff as well as from Rick's and his team and folks that have already left the county, we we really have invested a tremendous amount of effort in finding funding sources and been very aggressive about it. Ways to offset the bond measure. And so I can't underscore that enough. And I think Rick will touch on that a little bit more here in a minute. Final comment here was we really do need these improvements. I had no idea our system was so antiquated and inadequate. I guess this may have been from somebody who actually toured our existing jail. Pretty, pretty eye opening experience. I've not met an individual who hasn't gone through our jail and walked out a different person and understood, you know, why the county is investing so much effort in in the justice system improvement program. Next slide, please. Let me pause there before I dive into surveys, ask if there's any questions.
Just, I remember the Ari Bezel Wagner forums several years ago and they were well attended at the library fairly full, which I think means well over 100 people. Remember one in Floma, same kind of comment. I don't know what the capacity is there, but I would say well over 100. I'm wondering, I'm sure COVID and people not wanting to gather is part of it, but the two forums that we had this fall, I thought staff did an excellent job of being prepared and having good panels and to see 25 people in person and some of those are staff, I assume. Just wondering why we had, it seemed like we had more momentum a few years ago than we do now despite heroic efforts to engage the public. I'm not sure if there's any answer, but that was just wondering what what the difference is between several years ago and and now as far as public willing to go to a meeting.
Well, I don't know that I can, I can answer the question, but it's a real good comment. I do think the kind of the hybrid versions that we've, we've had are challenging as we know from a technical perspective. I didn't want to get ahead of myself because these are discussions we I haven't even had with with Joe Kirby yet, but Brenda Downham, our communications consultant, is strongly advocating that at our third forum, we make it an in-person event or at least have a virtual opening and then transition to an all in-person event. She had a term for the the type of of meeting, but really one where we would have subject matter experts at stations and you could do kind of a round robin thing. And so again, haven't had a chance to discuss those details beyond with with Brenda really, but I think it would make a big difference if we could have an in-person event. Likely we would do it here at Calpolia. And hopefully get the kind of turnout that we enjoyed during during the assessment.
I would say that during the assessment, my recollection is that the top numbers were in the eighties. And if you add up both in-person and online places in our forums, it wasn't that far off. And I really do think that the biggest Sorry, I really do think the biggest difference is COVID and more people just being wary still about attending these events in person. I I'm hoping also that there is some degree of saturation. When we first started having these conversations during the assessment, these were new conversations. We had not talked to community members about how our justice system ran. We had not talked to the broader community about the interactions between law enforcement and the courts and and the systemic challenges. And there was a huge appetite for that. But we've been talking about it for, you know, for several years now. So I think that some of that novelty has worn off. But we'll see. I like the idea of the third forum and having it more of a station based approach. We'll see whether we can get those numbers up there again.
Yep.
Other comments or questions?
Okay. Quantitative surveys, did want to touch on on the surveys that we've done this past past year. One in May and the other in September. These were statistically valid surveys conducted by D H M Research. To some of the, some of the key takeaways, county direction voter mood is split, but leaning towards the negative. However, we are comparatively, we're doing much better than the rest of the state or other counties. Homelessness, housing affordability and public safety are the biggest problems facing the county according to respondents. We learned that support for a bond measure is substantially higher when it includes funding for homelessness services facilities. The strongest reasons to support bond are connected to mental health, homelessness and emergency response. And I think you can see in terms of what we're contemplating for the bond measure, we really listened to that feedback and even pivoted from prior decisions based on on those service survey findings. So we truly are trying to listen and and understand what the community's priorities are. And finally, that kind of really the facilities and program acts, which is really about outcomes. It's more important than, you know, really the marginal cost of the bond measure. People are interested in the total package, what it's going to deliver, not not an incremental dollar amount. Next slide. We also did quantitative survey recently, excuse me, this is still on the quantitative survey. And specifically asked a hypothetical bond measure question as follows, Shell Benton County issue up to 95 million of general obligation bonds paid by property taxes for mental health, community safety and homelessness services facilities. And in this sample B, what was different about it is we added hand homeless homelessness services facilities to it. If passed, the bond measure would cost $130 per year for a typical home with a taxable value of 266,000. Funds for the proposed bond would be overseen by an independent community oversight committee. And as you can see, support was strong. Opposition decreased and there was actually a net 15% increase in terms of difference between support and opposition. And, you know, again, what was different about this hypothetical bond measure, this was our most recent quantitative survey in September was in this question, we tested and added homelessness services facilities and found that it made a big difference. And as such, you know, we we met a couple of weeks ago and proposed that we fund, provide funding relative to homelessness services facilities for a navigation center. And so that that is the preferred facility at this point. Next slide, qualitative survey. We also did a qualitative survey. 367 respondents of those that responded, two thirds had heard of Jacep. So to your point, Commissioner Ojero, the word, the word is getting out. Top three objectives, I have four listed, the last two there were equal. So better outcomes for those experiencing challenges with mental health. Develop homelessness centered facilities. And then provide treatment and rehabilitation for criminal offenders as well as increased accountability. So really aligns well, going all the way back to our vision and the elements that were that you are contemplating for inclusion in the bond measure. Just some other considerations that are important. So I don't want to make light of them. Certainly, you're well aware of macroeconomic pressures that the whole country is facing. Both inflationary pressure, which is beginning to ebb, I read. But then there's also the possibility of recession. And so, you know, just a lot of financial uncertainty, which weighs on people's minds. In terms of state of Oregon's economy, based on the the last update, probably the best we can hope for is a soft landing, which is a little bit different from past years. So I think it's safe to say, and Rick, I'm going to pause here and invite you to say a couple of words on the state of the economy.
Certainly, I think as we start to move forward and look at the broadening of resources, as negated to the financial picture is not great right now as it relates to borrowing, as it relates to opportunities for more resources. So some of those are things we're really going to have to look at. I think specifically as it relates to the state of Oregon in the economy, I mean, I think most of you probably perused through the recent revenue forecast and economic forecast. And again, you know, all, all, all projections are that you're looking at some form of recession as we move into the outer years. I think from a revenue standpoint, I, good news, I always try to be very positive on this. It's very relatively flat. I'd much rather be positive so that we're going into a legislative session where there are opportunities. But I have also seen in the past where you've had a flat revenue forecast and you're still able to to create opportunities. So again, I think that's something we're going to have to be really mindful of as we walk through this, not just in terms of state borrowing, but also just at a national level. What are some inflationary pressures that we have? Interest rate pressures, it's all going to impact this as as we move forward.
Eric, next slide. Yeah, so I'll finish up on this one, just cost of inaction. Construction costs continue to grow. Highest rate probably any of us have ever known. Certainly that is expected to decrease at some point, but nobody is ever talking about it turning negative. We know that our use of site and release is not a healthy practice. It's one that's been going on for years. And as I mentioned, it then translates into failure of peer and the general lack of accountability. I talked, I've already talked about the revolving door of jail, which if we don't do anything about it, it will only continue to get worse. And of course, we know that we have a tremendous number of people experiencing homelessness and mental health issues, all of which aren't expected to get better on their own. Next slide. All right. So I just want to hit some of the key decisions that you've already made so that we're we're clear on where we stand. In terms of site, we have selected the community safety and justice campus on Highway 20 for several of the justice system facilities as well as a site for the mental health crisis center downtown. Funding, we have secured 50% match for the new courthouse through OJD's OCC and I grant. We've also decided to self-fund construction of a new courthouse and district attorney's offices on the community safety and justice campus. So that that's moving forward. Relative to design, we, you, you have decided that we would like to have an integrated one-stop campus. That includes courthouse, correctional facility, emergency operations and sheriff's office. That's both to provide really alignment with best practices, operational efficiency, room for growth, transportation options, parking options. It's a, it's a wonderful design and vision. And then relative to mental health and homelessness, to expand funding, include funding for expanded mental health services and homelessness. Homelessness and housing resource, resource navigation center. Next Tuesday, the health department and I will be coming before the the board with a preferred option relative to the expanded mental health, expanded mental health services. So I'm excited to bring that to you in another week. Space planning was a really important element of conceptual design. And so I want to, I want to revisit it. And I'm going to invite Lori Koppenrath, if she's still with us and online, to say a few words. We went through a number of exercises, I think three iterations, maybe four to go to look at our space needs, both in terms of kind of a a wish list starting point and then getting down to a practical number. And what I want to share about about these numbers is that we've really, we've really cut everything to the bone at this point. And you can see it in most of the numbers in front of you. Those of you that that know me know I'm an speedingly frugal person. And I can say with with sincerity that there really isn't anything left to cut other than functional operational capacity. And so the process that DLR group went through with the stakeholders from each of these facilities really yielded bare bones, but best practices solution that really doesn't leave a whole lot left to cut. And that will be important as we get into our our deliberations here down the road. And Lori, I just wondered if if you are there online, if maybe you could talk a little bit about the correctional facility and specifically what you shared with me about the number of pods and best practices and where we've landed and just touch a little bit on the space planning process, please.
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
First, I want to say that while we have cut every facility to its minimally adequate functional need. Minimally adequate functional needs, there is still space in each of the facilities. To accommodate a twenty year growth, a modest growth, but still we're not building for today. We are building, looking to the future, understanding that. Being frugal with those square footages that we are including is really important. For the correctional facility, one thing that people often look at is decreasing the number of beds by cutting out number of pods. So generally speaking, the number of pods that we like to have, minimum number of pods we like to have in any correctional facility is seven. It gives you some. Operational. Agility to be able to house people separately as you need to and to. Make sure that those folks who have special needs are being considered in the housing process. So reducing the correctional facility by number of beds. Would be difficult if we were just to pull out the number of pods. We could be kind of hamstringing our sheriff's office. In how they could possibly house. Each of the individuals in their care. So I would not recommend at this point. Reducing the number of beds in terms of housing unit size. Or numbers, because you really will be hampering the the best practices in terms of providing programs and services that each of the. AICs might need. And then. I think one other thing to note is that. The district attorney did help us drastically with getting his square footage down to what the county might be able to afford. In the new courthouse and DA facility. So I just want to give kudos to that team.
Thank you, Lori. I I would also like to point out. That the courthouse sizing is largely dictated by requirements coming from OJD. And so. Unless you depart from those requirements, which isn't advised, there's not a whole lot of opportunity there. The reason I focused on, asked Lori to talk about the correctional facility specifically, as you can see, the. The number didn't change, the square footage didn't change dramatically from. Its first cut to its last. There were actually. Seven different modeling studies that were done by CGL as part of the assessment to determine. An appropriate size correctional facility for this county. They all yielded the same number, which was approximately a hundred and twenty beds. I think the number was one hundred, one twelve. But because of the way you design pods. One twenty is is a more practical number. And then as well, DLR group came along and revalidated that that space and sizing study. So. The correctional facility is sized for twenty years of growth. It has the spaces that we need for to provide rehabilitative. Services as well as help individuals with mental health and substance abuse. But to decrease the size, you start taking away from those benefits basically and and you would extract an entire pod. You don't. Take five beds, you you remove a pod, basically.
Well, thank you for that explanation. And Lori, thank you as well for explaining that that seven pod number is kind of a. Operational best practice and minimum number in order to have the flexibility for different categorization of. Adults in custody and for separation of men and women and for the special needs populations. Because that explains in part to me why that number has been so consistent over our bond. Requests to the community over the past twenty years, even though our population as a county was lower. It's still that operational model that is driving that number.
Yep, no, that's right. It's kind of a minimum number and that drives the size. So. That's great.
And I I appreciate that discussion that was going to be my question because I I had heard the term odd and. I I think part of what we're fighting against is the. Motel, while there's a hundred beds, well, if you take out ten percent. You may not save that much on construction costs, but you you have ninety beds. And this is a more complicated, nuanced. Operation and and I this. This seems like it's been a persistent question. We keep being a hundred and twenty beds as well, make it a little smaller, save money. And so I think it's important to. Emphasize that this number has been well researched. There isn't a lot of. Flexibility if we want. The mental health component and maybe even. Lay out what the odds are and and then give our voters, well, which one do you want to cut out? Rather than just the. Motel model that I think a lot of people have.
Thank you. My next slide, please.
And can I say one more thing?
No, please, go ahead.
Just another thing about the hundred and twenty beds. So the way we plan for these types of facilities is that we need to have a certain number of beds. Kind of held in reserve for classification needs, peaking needs and maintenance needs. So really, this facility is anticipating its full build out, its full occupancy would be about a hundred beds. Occupied with twenty beds held in reserve for those times when. You know, there might be something that happens at the fair and you need a few more beds or there's some upgrades that need to be done or some repairs that need to be done. Or just so that you have the right beds in the right places as people are coming into the facility. So. I just want to be very clear that we're looking at about a hundred people total for a hundred and twenty beds. That's how. These types of facilities are planned into the future.
The the other part of that, Lori, is. And I don't need that now, but what's our current usage? It's well, we have forty beds. Well. My understanding is it can be full with as few people as nineteen. So our operational capacity is nineteen to thirty five or something like that. And then we have. North Core and Polk County and releasing more people than we want to. So. At some point, we ought to develop what our current. Real capacity. Should be like today. And then when you talk about. A hundred bed. The the new facility is operationally in full, it's something around a hundred. I would guess that. What our current capacity should be and the hundred that you're talking about. Those numbers may not differ greatly. Versus I I just had a constituent say, well, you have forty beds and. You're tripling that to a hundred and twenty. So well, that's not accurate.
No, a good point. I'm I'm happy to address it right now. So if you. Folks often just think about our jail of forty beds, but that's not the picture. As you mentioned, we rent beds in Norfolk or we rent beds at Polk. Our current capacity or excuse me, our current need. Is about seventy to seventy five beds. Right now, that's that's what we we need. That's what we fill. If you add on to that twenty years of growth. And you. Reduce the use of site and release. You end up at about ninety six beds. Which is the hundred that that Lori just mentioned. And then and then you need some space for for peaking and and maintenance, basically. So that's the that's the progression where we really need about seventy to seventy five beds today. With twenty years of county growth and reducing the use of site and release as well as. Matrixing people out of the jail, just early release, basically. Gets you up to about ninety six beds by twenty forty. And and that's your at capacity at that point. And that's exactly what we're designing for is twenty years of growth. And 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 that's the that's the rubric. It's really well detailed in the assessment, but this is I'm providing a high level summary. And as you can see from the picture to my left. There's room on the campus to expand the correctional facility if needed. However, I will say that if our programs are successful. We may not need to expand the correctional facility, and that's certainly one of the objectives. If we can reduce recidivism. Then we can reduce the need for additional beds down the road. So that that's part of part of the objective.
As part of this equation, I'd like you to separate out future growth. The people that were releasing because of the matrix and not not having space, because that's the current need. And so that we could have, this is, and it can be arranged. But if you're talking about seventy to seventy five, I assume that's. Releasing. At least a modest number of people that we really don't want to release currently. And then add to that. Future growth. Okay, as a separate. Component. Because that that's a. Estimate and and but we do have. Future needs and. I'd like. What our current situation is and then compare that to what we're proposing.
Sure, happy to do that. Yeah, I don't think I can do it off the top of my head.
Well, but it's more than seventy to seventy five.
Could be, yes.
Seems like it's in the eighties. And like I say, it's I'm sure it's arranged some some days we're not releasing as many folks as. As others. Just so we have an accurate comparison where we are today versus. What we're proposing.
And I would point out that in the assessment that CGL did, they did acknowledge the fact that we were likely to see a spike in jail bed usage. Initially, once we have a new correctional facility because of the fact that we are intending to reduce site and lease. But they would expect that to diminish as well because behavior will change once people are held accountable.
So just a couple of. Pretty pictures. This is our site draft site plan for the community safety. Actually, this is just not a draft site plan, but this was a sizing plan for the Community Safety and Justice Campus, but does give you an idea of sizes. And layout. As well, next slide. The photograph of the beginnings of our Mental Health Crisis Center. Corner of Fourth and Van Buren. Probably several of you are standing in that picture in the background there. But happy to have that underway. Next slide. And now finally, Rick has been so impatient. We get to financials and.
I think we have about thirty minutes left. We had targeted ninety minutes for this. Almost an hour into.
Good. I'm not on my phone. Oh, yeah. So any questions? Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments, questions before we move on to Rick?
Good morning, Commissioners, Joe, Anne. See all of you. I think before I kind of dive into the financials here a little bit, just a bit of a reflection and you know, you start thinking about it when you start working with these. Projects with a variety of different financing mechanisms. And I've had the privilege and the blessing of my life to be able to deal with a variety of housing projects. School based projects. I've been part of helping build a lot of the correctional systems and changes to that and. I think coming to the county and reflecting on the the project here. It's huge. It's huge. And and I say that just because it's recognition to all of you. For the hard work that you put in as I listen to Nick talk about the background. This is not easy work. And when I think about all those projects that I've worked on over the years, those were individual projects in individual communities. And you come here and you have essentially three pretty major, four major projects. And that's a lot. That's a lot. And as you see, and as I get into the the financials here, the work that has been done by the county, a lot of people prior to me and. Probably prior to you as well, all of the effort that has gone in to raise the capital that is needed for this. Again, this is no small undertaking. So again, I just wanted to take that opportunity as more of a newbie to the to the community to to say thank you. And for all the work you do and also to my partner here to the right. Again, this is not easy work and he's he's persevered through all of this. He's been a great partner in terms of working the project. So. Again, just. Just wanted to reflect on that and and say, you know, this is this is terrific work. So with that, I will move into some financial information. So let me start kind of at a high level. We'll dive down a little bit if you like, but this is just to, and again, some of this is familiar with. Many of you that when we started talking about this in May. And we've done some re categorization, but this kind of gives you an idea of of what we're looking at. It kind of goes back to my remarks a moment ago. Hundred eighty million dollar project and with multiple phases, multiple initiatives. Committed resources of forty one million dollars again, and that's before borrowing. That's that's work that's been done at the state level, at the federal level, some local dollars all put into that. So. Again, forty one million dollar commitment, leaving us with a gap of about a hundred and thirty eight point six million, as you see there in the middle. But then the commitment that you've made, the work that we've done together to kind of look at and we'll talk about borrowing here a little bit and the impacts of that. But about thirty three point nine that we have committed for the courthouse and the DA's office. Leaving us with a number that we'll be talking a lot more about here is about a hundred and four point, let's just call it a hundred and five million dollars. And that's really basically with all the things that we know. Now, one thing I want to point out, there's that. Mental Health and Homelessness Service Facility. Notice that's blank. And we'll talk about that. And again, as we, as Nick and I like to allude to, the buckets. Of all of these and and making sure that we have those good estimates. But. The other part that I want to again recognize, recognition of DLR, they've done a lot of work and estimate. I know you've seen a lot of cost estimates over the years. But you know, we've got this pretty well, at least to this point. Feeling really, really good about that estimated cost. And I believe that there is cushion built into that. Have all seen escalated costs. But again, as you know, numbers always change and but I think we're getting to that point of of real refinement. As we move forward. So let's go to the next slide and you've got an attachment. This is the the the. Piece that you're from more familiar with. You've seen this before. And this really takes that number that you saw there a moment ago, the hundred and seventy nine million dollars to the far left, current cost estimates. It gives you an idea of all the resources that go into this. And again, this is the part that this is, this is complex. It's a cobbling of a variety of different types of resources. But as you guys can go down the boxes here, Mental Health Crisis Center, fully funded, at least from the standpoint as as it relates to our project. The seven point seven million dollars. That's a big chunk of that coming from the state through both state ARPA dollars that was committed. Back at the beginning of the twenty twenty one, twenty one, twenty one, twenty one. And three by. And then again, a lot of work put into the twenty two short, twenty twenty two short session. With the five point four million dollars of general fund. And then, of course, there was the the great work done on the federal side with the earmarks from the first year of that where we received the one million dollars. From. HERSA, the HRSAA, as it relates to fully fulfilling that project. So again, you notice there are seven point seven million dollar cost. All resources are in the bank. I guarantee you they're 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 making interest right now. So everything is is nice and secure. And we're not showing any uncommitted resources. Then you move into this next, and this is where we've restructured here a little bit as we get more into the Community Safety and Justice Campus. And we put it into two phases. So phase one, and Vance knows, we've been talking a lot with the OJD funding agreement. So we're getting mixed up with phases. There's phases in that. That agreement. There's phases here. So sorry, Vance, to add a little bit more complexity to this, but. I think it makes it easier for us when we think of this in in terms of a phase one, which is what we're really undertaking now. And the resources and you'll see as we get to the end that that's fully committed. But then the phase two, which is obviously. The bond measure in which we will need to ensure the the funding for that phase two. But. As you look at that. A big chunk of of that total sixty five point five million dollars is what we're. But as you look at that, um a big chunk of of that uh total um sixty-five point five million dollars is which we're undertaking right now is coming from our borrowing uh and then the other half coming from Oregon Judicial Department. And uh I will say again, when I talked earlier about dealing with a lot of different types of financing tools over the years, I've never quite seen one like this this before. This is a new one uh as Vance will and Nick will attest, there's a lot of um ways in which the money moves on all of that to make this work and it's gonna be a lot of monitoring and a lot of work that we'll have to do at the financial level. But again, we we can do it. We're we're staffed for it. We're prepared for it. I always look at it as a as a new fun challenge um in in terms of uh uh of financing tools. But again, that is a a big chunk of that. You will see clearly uh as early start land acquisition, you notice that at the top. Um couple of things just to point out, the big chunk of that is the American Rescue Plan Act um that you see there. And then, of course, the capital financing, and that's another thing that uh we're working with OJD that is part of what we call the land credit for that agreement. And that's something that we we still need to work through and get to finalization. So there's still some uncertainties around that. But again, um that's um that's that's the way we have it restructured. So again, that's the majority of of the dollars. Uh you will notice that I did put the OTAC, the owner's representation contract in there. I think it belongs there, even though that is something we have self-funded uh with our general fund, just to make sure it's all uh put in one place. Then you'll see with phase two, that's the pieces that are unfunded, the hundred and um six million dollars of I just say completely unfunded, hundred and six million dollars uh of costs. We do have one point three million dollars of committed resources. Again, as a reminder, this is uh the dollars that we got uh through earmarks uh from Senator Merkley specifically for that. Um I know it's a real small amount, but I think it's an important amount to 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 put in there with federal dollars become federal requirements. And so as we navigate through all of this and more resources, we have to uh be aware of those and what that could potentially mean to the rest of the resources uh that we put into this. So uh again, um small amount, but something that could have significant impacts in the way we manage the the program going forward. Uh and then again, you will see uh at the bottom, we have that empty space there um specifically as it relates to uh the facilities that we'll need to fill in the blanks. And again, I'll speak to that here shortly. And then finally, the JSEP program support. And that's uh essentially, Nick's talked about the great work of Coastline that's been here, Brendan Downham, that has helped and Nick, of course, and Lindsay and all their great work. We have to have that program su- support. So that's what represents that which we have um essentially self-funded. So that gets you down to that bottom line is all the way to the right of a hundred and four point six. Next slide, please. So let's talk, take a pause for a minute and talk a little bit about borrowing. Just because I think that's again, an important element as we move in here into phase one. As I mentioned, um thirty-three, uh thirty-three point two million dollars of of project cost that we will need to finance. You guys have seen this little chart before. I cleaned it up a bit and it's it's an important chart. And just as a refresher, uh this is the model that uh I had put together in relation to try to measure where we're at when we make these decisions around borrowing. And where's it gonna put us as it relates to uh best practices around fund balance uh reserves that you have? And as I've told you all, the orange line that you see there, uh that's what you've been trending. Great work by people prior to me in terms of managing finances, a good, good, strong position, uh double A two rating from a bond standpoint. I think again, that's that's where we stood. The decision that we've made in terms of this financing now represents the yellow line. And you can see that dip. And again, just as a reminder, those percentages you see are basically our percentage of fund balances to our total operating revenue. And that's a way of measuring when you're looking at borrowing, what rating agencies look at. And what the rating agencies would tell you is that green line you see is where you should be to be a good, you know, again, there's no, you can be below it, you can be above it. But that's from a best practice standpoint. So the decision that you can, you see has got us really, really, really close to that uh yellow line. And as I told you back in in um, I think it was May, that um that's about as far as as I would recommend as your CFO to go. Um I think as you start to make decisions that maybe dip or even get closer to that line, then it 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 could cost us in terms of interest rates. It could cost us in terms of ratings and certainly nobody wants to put this in a into a negative financial situation. So again, this is just sort of a a summary um in terms of what um we're seeing. When I model this, I think of tax exempt finding, uh excuse me, tax exempt funding as the mechanism, so issuing tax exempt debt bonds. It's the most efficient way and usually the best way to get best cost for the county if you're a good ratings. Now, doesn't limit us, though. We could be also looking at uh borrowing. We've done that before. Depends on where the market's at. And so we'll be looking at all of this. But when I do a lot of these modelings, I'm usually using taxes and financing and it usually gives us the best cost. So I just wanted to put that out there. There's still uh a choice that we will need to to make as it relates to that. Overall, I think we're gonna probably end up with about and and this number, I I just noticed that uh since Nick and I had some updates that we needed to do, uh I did not uh update this correctly uh because the issuance is gonna be a little higher, I think, than the thirty-four million um because we had some cost estimate that we were doing on land. So we're probably roughly around thirty-four and a half million. The reason it's higher is cost of issuance. We have to pay the lawyers. We have to pay the underwriters uh when it comes to financing. So that's not a huge, uh it's a big amount, but it's uh certainly something that we we have to factor in. So I'm thinking somewhere around thirty-four and a half million. Uh when I was doing all of this modeling, I always put in a little bit of cushion. So you don't need to worry about, you know, if it goes to thirty-four and a half million, that it will have a drastic impact on that yellow line down there. Terms of timing, uh I'm really, at least at this point, based on, you know, all the plans and a lot of this will be dependent on cash flow and how quickly we get the OJD agreement, how quickly those funds begin to flow. Um but I'm probably looking at April or May uh that we would need to be able to to get out and make a decision in terms of, I shouldn't say make a decision, be able to actually get resources. So we're probably January, February coming forward to begin modeling. Where are some of the best uh places? I've already been working with my team of the Bond Council uh as well as our underwriters and our contractors, as well as our financial advisors. So uh we're all working in tandem. They've all let me know that April and May is very reasonable, long as we get started probably sometime in January. One thing I, this is a very technical thing, but I think it's important to remember, not only for this borrowing, but also for with the passage of uh the bond measure, eventually another issuance potentially down the road. When we issue tax exempt debt, there are rules and we have to make sure that we're very, very uh thoughtful and and accurate as it relates to managing those money. One that always comes to mind is I always call it the thirty-six month rule. You issue bonds, you gotta be done thirty-six months. Um so that that is a really hard and fast rule. Uh there's another one that's a little bit smaller. It's called the ten percent rule that within six months, you have to expend ten percent of those. That's from the time that we actually issue the bonds. Uh the reason this is important is, you know, violations of that um puts us in a situation where they flip tax exempt debt to taxable. And that's a huge cost. Uh so all that debt that we had planned for to pay suddenly goes up. Again, that, you know, dealing with tax exempt debt is efficient, but it requires a lot of uh of work and making sure that when we're looking at cost, that it's eligible cost, it's capitalized cost. Um and so again, we're gonna be dealing with that as it relates to our borrowing. But the other part we have to remember on the OJD side, the proceeds that are 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 that are created that we get from that account, that's tax exempt debt too. They, the state is issuing bonds. So we have it on both sides, tax exempt debt from the state, tax exempt debt from the county. So it's again, just want to make sure I put that out there so that we're we're thoughtful about it as we move on. Next slide, please. So this is the slide I hate. Uh sorry, uh but it's an important slide. Um this is uh interest rates. And when you're looking at um the the ten-year tax exempt rate compared to the ten-year treasury and the ten-year treasury is what we typically see as kind of we hear a lot about where things are moving. And you can see what happens is with the tax exempt, the triple A and then D, it falls along typically with your ten-year treasury. So that's why it's a good measure. Um but really, you know, what what's important to to look at here is to see kind of where uh things have been trending as it relates to that rate. And um just uh it's kind of hard for me to point out, but if you look somewhere between the, you can consider right about the first part after twenty twenty-two, that's when we were talking back in May. Uh look at that significant spike that you can see that's happened there in twenty twenty-two. Uh as I told Nick, that's pretty much burned through a lot of the cushion that we were putting in place now. What are the feds gonna do? That's what we all have to continue to watch. We're hearing obviously that they're talking about more uh increases. So uh this is something that again, we can't always control it. Um and we also have to be, we can't, you know, the thought is, well, do we issue early? Well, remember, when you issue debt, that's the clock starts. And so we have to be ready to proceed. So we have to be again, really, really careful as as we move forward. Again, nothing that we can do about this, but uh certainly I think again, we're positioned well to get the best cost possible. But I just want to make sure that you all recognize this is a factor in as well.
Yeah, I ask a question.
Yeah.
I, over time, that differential between the ten-year treasury and the ten-year uh tax exempt um rate seems to vary um vary. Do you, is there any predictability to that? I see that there's quite a gap again, so the tax exempt rate is.
Yeah. But you know, I think, you know, the in the past, you see like nineteen ninety-six up to around two thousand nine, you probably saw a little bit more gaps. I think a part of that is around the measurement that that they used and sort of the differences. Uh I think it, you know, it 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 obviously tracks relatively close to it, but there there are gonna be times where maybe it's more advantageous. And that's where our underwriters and will help us to to really identify, you know, what's the best timing, what's the best way to structure? A lot of times, as you know, there's a lot of mixing and matching. You go to maybe more front-loaded, more back-loaded, whatever the case is right now. The yield curve is somewhat, you know, flat. But again, that will be all the mixture that we do with our underwriters in terms of getting the best rate possible.
And how does the duration of the bond affect that?
How does that impact? Well, again, it always depends on what the yield curve is doing. Uh so with the flat yield curve, the longer you go out, you can usually keep um rates pretty uh well straight. That is a, again, something I haven't necessarily thrown out to you is the idea of a forty-year bond. That's getting pretty lengthy. I'm not a big fan. I think thirty years is more of a max. I have modeled twenty-year for you, which I really like. That's what we've done a lot uh in the past. But again, I think everything that I've been modeling though with this size is around the thirty-year. But forty years can happen. Uh those are conversations that we can have. Uh and again, a lot of times it depends on, you know, where's the yield curve at? Are you really actually gonna have, you have a longer period of payment? But your costs could stay relatively the same as a thirty-year note. So those are conversations that we'll have. Those are options I will put in front of you as we we get closer.
Uh Rick, so some of this uh differential, I assume uh uh i- is a factor of supply and demand and and um if people want to buy treasuries that are fairly uh popular these days because of uh uh low risk, uh that uh there's pretty um pretty good um demand and it's a worldwide uh market, whereas our uh tax exempt are more within like our country. Um uh I guess the question is, you you talked about maybe going out in April or May. Um it sounds like maybe we don't have much flexibility on the timing. I mean, if rates are coming down next year and I'm kind of like gasoline prices or something. Well, maybe if I wait another um few weeks, um things seem to be trending in our um favor.
Yeah, so you know, it's it's always kind of the uh, you know, the gambling component of it. It's like, how long do you wait? Uh as you know, and that's where again, our financial advisors and our underwriters will be helpful to to help us find, you know, what is the best time, where are things trending? I think, you know, the part about timing and I, when I say April, May, and I'm starting to look at the cash flows in terms of when we started getting into big money. Uh and and we confront some because that's, I mean, right now, we think about it, I have no money i- in my accounts. I have commitments, but I've got to actually have dollars in my accounts to be able to spend. I have the ability between fiscal years with our general fund to be able to float a lot of that. But by the end, by June thirtieth, I can't float no more. I've got to be able to reconcile funds and be able to get to the point. So that's one of the the factors that we put in uh to this. I mean, ideally, of course, I'd have cash in hand right now and that makes my job a little bit easier. But uh that's kind of the, I I think one of the hard and fast timeframes that I would put in is is June thirtieth. Now, let's hypothetically say that rates are really going down come May and it's like, and we're saying, you know, we're really seeing this this big dip. Maybe it makes sense to wait. Then I would have to look at probably internal loan within our fund structure to be able to get us through the fiscal year and buy us time. So there's ways in which we can play with that. So I assure you, Commissioner, that uh that will be something I'll obviously be working very closely with the underwriters on, figure out how to get us the best cost. You know, indications again, if you believe the economists, they're saying it's actually going the other way, but um we'll we'll see. See, any factors.
April May deadline is really for the OJD borrowing. That's not the bond sale.
Yeah, yes. So so the so the um uh so so hopefully, if all goes well, uh we our our funding agreement with OJD, we're, I think, getting close to the math, what I call the master agreement, which is really sort of the summary of everything. But as I've noted earlier, we have different phases in this master agreement. One phase being two million that we got a couple of years, a couple of by names, a guard by name ago. Then we got the, what we got in twenty twenty-one. And then keep in mind, because like I, the cost escalation, remember, the OJD has to issue another set of bonds, which is five million. So we have a phase one, phase two and phase three. And every one of those have a funding agreement that we have to negotiate. So so Vance, myself uh and and Gary Stockoff are working through those. But I I feel pretty confident, once we get this master agreement in place, we can certainly get phase one done. Phase two will be a little bit more because that's got a lot more moving parts to it. Um but I think we should, you know, within the next few months, be able to have those things locked in. But part of the uniqueness of the way that agreement works is that we have to run our dollars through OJD's accounts and it has to come back around to be able to get credit. So there's some money magic that we have to do. Um that makes it makes it um fun and unique to where we have to have money to spend. So
Yes.
I don't want to get into too much of that detail. Yeah. So we get that in place. But I think come May and June, that's when I'm gonna probably, based on again, the expenditures that OTAC is putting together in terms of the flow, that's when I'm gonna need some money.
Commissioners, I'd also just like to share that, you know, keep in mind that the the timeline that you're looking at here and the rates that are shown here and some of the other comments that Rick has made. Now, this is just one lens to look through. It's not the only lens because we have so many variables related to this project. And many of those variables have independent timelines as well. And so the way I look at this is this is really more of an art than it is a science. And uh the interest rate can't just be the only driver of what we do and when we do it because of all of these other variables uh that uh Rick talked about some and then there are others. So just keeping in mind, we want to absolutely get the lowest rate we can. But there's also other factors that are driving our timelines uh and our projects. Uh and also keeping an eye on the escalating costs uh from a project perspective, as we've seen dramatic swings just in the last year. So this is important, but it's not the only driver of the decisions that we're gonna have to make.
So Commissioners, let's move into kind of the last part of our presentation here. And if we could maybe skip to a couple of slides. There we go, the buckets. So now we've talked a lot about, you know, our estimated cost. Let's let's start to talk about decisions that need need to be made and kind of where we stand. So talk to you about the hundred and four point six million dollars, gone through that. Talk to you about the cost of issuance. That's what we're estimating that we would end up having to pay in terms of, again, a tax exempt financing. Um there's a bucket that's left to be filled. Uh, and that's your your mental health and homelessness services facilities. We've got it. That's a decision that needs to be made. Um, and that will ultimately define for us what the total resource needs. So that be basically this in in my way of thinking comes out to our financing amount. That's what we'll need to do. So that bucket that to be determined is uh something that still needs to be made. And I know will be discussions uh as we start to proceed uh here in the next several weeks to finally get to that X. So let's talk in terms of just to kind of frame this up for you. Um. So you you know, first and foremost, as I was just speaking to is determine the proposed funding amount for the expanded mental health and homelessness services. That's a a decision number one. Has to be made so that we know exactly what our total need is, the total amount cost estimate is at this point. Um, I think that, you know, once we have that and clearly, as you know, you you can do the math, you can see kind of where we're at at a hundred and five point four million dollars with two buckets. So clearly, you're going to be somewhere above that. Um, so just hypothetically, we'd be were to say a hundred and ten million dollars. Then obviously, we have to talk about what is the maximum bond amount that you're voting forward. So I know we talked a lot about a hundred million. This could be those hundred and ten million. And again, don't know where the amount is, depends on the decision. That's critical, uh obviously, because if it's the whole resource amount, then you know, that kind of sets the ground for us to be able to say, okay, here's our estimated cost. Now we need to start moving forward in terms of that particular measure. If it's less than that amount, then basically we've got some decisions to make uh and some options to consider because obviously, where do those resources come from? So hypothetically, again, if that number was a hundred and ten million, I'm just using that, but and we decided hypothetically that hundred million was was the max. Where does that ten million come from? Option one, you reduce the scope. So you have a hundred and ten million dollars worth of needs. You reduce the scope of your services or your and your or your and or your facilities as it relates to doing business. That's one option. Another option, which I don't even know why I call this off. You're probably looking at me saying, what are you thinking, Rick? Increased borrowing, I as I said, you can increase borrowing, you can make that yellow line go closer to the green. I would not recommend it to you, but it is a decision. It is an option to make, but uh what I would be telling you is that Commissioners probably pushing the envelope here a little bit. Um. Option three is shift resources from current and planned budget. We have a budget upon us right now. We are in the, you're going to be hearing a lot from me over the next uh three and four months about uh twenty three, twenty five budget. Decisions can be made in relation to that budget in terms of prioritization. A lot of things that we do, not only on our operations, but with capital improvement. There's plans that you have made as it relates to better resources that we have received. Those are all things are in the works. It comes down to prioritization. Is this something that is is more important if you're needing to fill a gap? Those are decisions that you can make. Option four, you will know that we have uh here a legislative request. Um, we have lobbyist in place. Uh, you'll be hearing from me next week to talk about our proposed uh state legislative agenda. Uh, in our goal setting back in November, we talked a lot about could Jason be a part of that? Um, those are conversations that we'll be having with you and decisions we need to be making actually really, really quick. Because our lobbyists are telling us by probably the end of December, we need forms filled out for various requests that we're going to make. So again, there's an option there. I also threw out there that we now have on contract with C F M, our federal side too. I don't know how much the opportunities are there. I see that more on infrastructure and transportation, but you know, I put it out there as something that we could potentially pursue. Obviously, with federal dollars, as I always say, there are federal requirements. And with federal requirements, you put it into a project, it creates complexity. Um. And then option five, you know, maybe there's a combination of of the of the love things here. Maybe it's it's something uh that you look across the board, but those are all, I think, again, options that you face now as we as we move into this uh decisions that need to be made. That will get us to that place of next steps. So let's go to just this last slide. It's a nice picture. I think this actually does what I just talked through, probably more in a um uh uh kind of a graphical way. So you know, again, back to that decision, bond above a hundred million dollars. That's a key decision. If it's yes, let's go set bond amount and let's let's begin to move forward. The answer is no. If it's if it's um not above that, and if not meet our old cost, then we have to face those circles and those basically are all the circles that I had just spoke to you about in terms of options. So I won't go through those again unless Nick wants to add anything. Again, I don't like the fourth circle borrow. But uh just uh, you know, again, it's a decision that uh would be you would be faced with. So sure, wise members of the Commissioners, I think that concludes our presentation, at least for today, unless Nick has any closing comments.
Well, I have one more slide. So yesterday, talk about next steps. So all of those important questions that uh Rick just uh laid out for you is what we'll we'll get into on December twentieth when we come back. Okay, then finalize our bond package uh on the third of January. We could push that to the tenth if needed, but uh really, the early part of January is a must have in terms of what follows. Um. You need to uh then uh having made a decision and start working on their bond measured language, which is a process that will involve Secretary of State. Um, we have until the twenty fourth to file our bond measure title, but uh we will actually align on that title in the early part of February. Uh, through our your Tuesday meetings uh to give us a at least a week, if not two, to spare before filing. And then you can see the additional dates that that follow. Um. So that's that's the the road ahead of us. Um. And that concludes the presentations, sorry, Nick.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
I I guess, oh, wh- what do you want from us today or?
No, again, just to to uh revisit what I said at the outset, really today was uh uh to set the stage for the discussions that uh will follow on the twentieth and the third. Uh, and uh to answer any questions relative to the information that we shared. It was a lot. Um, and but felt like we needed to uh open these deliberations by really examining kind of all of the facts that we have over, you know, five plus years of work uh before we we jump into the the deliberations. So no, no expectations today, Commissioner.
Actually, on um Nick's little chat, but it was specific, but but again, next week, we will be talking about the state legislative agenda. And I think, as you know, that and it's unfortunate timing of all events kind of coming together at the same time, but we will need to be proceeding here relatively soon. I know uh myself and Joe and Nick will be having conversations with each of you individually in terms of um thoughts around that. I know that I provided you some ideas uh around that agenda, but again, trying to at least tie into this specific piece and getting that earmarked will be a discussion that we have next week on the thirteenth during goal setting. Uh, that will again, need to probably become firm on as it relates to those those requests, or at least firmer.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, and Lori uh online. Uh, we look forward to continuing conversations on this.
Thank you very much.
All right. So uh before we move on, I do want to call for a break. But I have a question for county council. Would it be better when we come back from break to move into the public hearing? Or to go to the next item on the agenda?
It is entirely up to you. The only requirement for the public hearing is that you cannot open it before eleven. So anytime after eleven, you're good to go. So it's to be your choice.
All right, and we are back. And we will resume with item 4.3. Update from Benton County Tax Trash Solid Waste Process Work Group with Darren Nichols, Community Development. And I think we have Sam and Parati online. And after this item, we will move into the public hearing.
So I believe it is for the discussion.
It says 4.3, it says update from Benton County Tax Trash.
Okay, I'll come back to that.
But, well.
No, because that involves George and Gary.
Okay.
All right, so let's just make sure Sam's online. If Sam is prepared to provide the updates. Mr. Parati, are you on the line with us currently?
I don't see him.
Yeah, he had another meeting, so. I can provide an update. I'll give you, it'll be very brief. I think the work group and the subcommittees are making good progress. We have now five subcommittees. I think we've mentioned that to you earlier. The fifth subcommittee was one focused on communication and community engagement going forward. So it's really good to see that kind of proactive group going up their sleeves and thinking about how best to communicate with the Benton County community on a going forward basis, which will be critically important. Especially as we get into some of the more substantive work around the Sustainable Materials Management Plan and some long-term policy decisions. It will be critically important for us to engage with the community and frankly, not just with the Benton County community, but with the waste shed community, which we now know includes at least 28 counties. So how we do that will be important. The work group itself meets on the 15th, so that will be the last work group, full work group meeting of 2022 calendar year. I understand that the project is on on time. We expect to complete our work by late February, early March and present recommendations to you all. The subcommittees, as they meet, are building pretty substantial reports sections, which will then feed into a larger kind of work group report. So just so you know, kind of what we're doing is building a lot of information and then building towards some specific recommendations that the work group will work on in the new year, but they're making good progress. We've got pages and pages of good thinking, some really insightful
Yeah.
work is being done. And I, you know, as I always do, I don't want to miss this opportunity to thank the work group members and other members of the community who have stepped forward to bring your expertise. It's really incredible to see the thoughtfulness, the commitment, the dedication that in our communities has been great. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone who's participated in the community to date. So if you have questions, I'm happy to try to answer those.
Sure. So you mentioned the work groups are putting together their sort of reports. And then did I hear you correctly? All those reports will be kind of put into one big report.
Yeah, that's correct. And that that harmonization, I guess, is probably the right word between the subcommittee's work is beginning as well. The legal subcommittee has been in touch with the landfill capacity subcommittee to kind of tug and pull on some of the their understandings of the facts to make sure that we're, those work network is being coordinated and the the final product, when it gets to you, is consistent and hopefully coherent.
Sure. So what's the process on presenting that? If I'm remembering correctly, is it going to be going to like the planning commission for their input or DSAC and SWAC?
As soon as the work group has a draft that's ready for review, and that's really up to the facilitator. So I would defer to Sam, who's not on the call. But my understanding, as soon as we have a kind of, some kind of substantive draft that will go to the solid waste advisory council and the planning commission for their review and comment. And of course, to the public for comment as well. We've been getting lots of public comments along the way and encourage more of that. Those are all being kind of fed into what will eventually be a pretty substantial final document. And then that will get went down to a set of recommendations.
So that any input that comes from those other groups, we could probably expect some changes, the document before it comes back to us.
I would anticipate, yeah, I would anticipate this. Right now, it's kind of a work in progress building up. And then at some point, it will become an editing kind of tugging, pulling, whittling process in which SWAC and the planning commission will definitely have a hand in helping to form and shape the what eventually comes to the board. And of course, the final product will be yours to own and tailor.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is I've heard a little, a couple of little things just on sidelines about how the open house went, but I haven't really heard much more than that. So I would love some feedback about that. And the second point was that I had heard that we were looking for an additional participant in the legal committee. Has there been any progress on that?
Yes, thank you. So take those questions in order that you presented them. The open house went really well. It was in this room. The first half of the work group meeting was work group business. And then we kind of recessed the work group formal meeting at 5 o'clock, set out dinner for all participants and invited kind of rearrange the tables. We had five stations in the room, one station outside the room with sticky sheets up behind and kind of status reports on the table. So if anybody wanted to see kind of the state of each of the subcommittee's work, those were available to browse through. We had at least two members of each subcommittee assigned to the station with a staff person. And to answer questions, engage dialogue, and then any ideas that were put forward in those conversations were written up behind the table, kind of in a visible running dialogue capturing those. One of the most kind of earliest and most interesting dialogues is actually in the table over here to my right, where Eric is sitting, was the communications table and trying to remember who all was there. At that table, Luisa was there and I think Toby Lewis. And we had a handful of really engaging conversation that started immediately before dinner was served and continued right to the end of the session. So there's three or four pages of really good ideas about how to connect with the community going forward. But overall, I think it was successful. People had a chance to engage with anyone that they wanted to engage with. The participation was fairly strong and consistent throughout the evening. There was a, and there was a lot of collaboration, I think. Not to speak for Sam, but in the kind of our own debrief, one thing that Sam found encouraging was that members of the work group in the public who shared very different perspectives spent a lot of time in constructive dialogue and kind of friendly engaging in constructive problem solving together. So our sense was that it went well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So the second question.
The legal committee and.
Thank you. Yes. So one thing that we, I should say, one thing that Sam has recognized and some of the members of the public have recognized that we've got a representative legal voice for Benton County. That's our esteemed counsel Vance Crowley. And for Public Services, they have a contract lawyer participating on their behalf, Jeff Condit. What we have, what we have not been able to secure to date is a representative for the community voice, neighborhood voice. We've invited several individuals, land use experts, including an attorney who's been representing some of those clients to participate. They've declined those invitations, but we have recently reached out to Ginny Lucker. Some of you know her as Virginia Gustafson, who's a retired land use attorney, but still actively practices and works in the community. And Ginny has expressed an interest in participating and providing a community perspective, community legal perspective. So I believe that Sam is reaching out to her in the next day or two to see how best to bring her on board, whether that's in a contract directed to county or perhaps more appropriate contract with Sam and Parati and ICM resolution so that there is some distance there with that perspective. So and I think Sam intends to put that question forward to the work group next week to get their feedback input, make sure that that's an appropriate approach.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. On that same vein, I would say that we have one seat open on Benton County Tax Trash for a planning commission representative. And the planning commission chair, Nick Fowler, kind of put that opportunity forward to the planning commission at their last meeting. And no one jumped forward enthusiastically offering to participate. So I think that's probably a need to fill that. Of course, we're, we're short planning commissioners. You have several vacancies already. But that may be a conversation that we ask the board chair to engage directly with the planning commission chair and see if we can get somebody to fill that voice on our work.
Well, I have somebody in mind that I think should apply to the planning commission. Just a matter of convincing them to go through with it. So.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I mean, yeah, across the board, we would welcome additional members in planning commission.
We need multiple, correct?
Yeah, we have four. Sorry, we have five currently. One has asked not to be reappointed at the end of the year so they can care for their parent and take care of some family matters. Which then drops us to four, which is not a quorum on planning commission. However, I understand you're going to interview a new, one new candidate, I think on Friday, and that would, if, you know, if that's a successful candidate that would bump us back to five after the end of the year, but five is the bare minimum. So that leaves four vacancies, presuming that you're able to fill the one this week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. See it a little bit.
All right. And with that, we can move into the public hearing. You have a question left at the end of that?
Your voice went up.
And do we have, do we have a printout of the question?
Our commissioners Vance has a printout of the revised process from our previous meeting.
All right. Well, I will see five minutes script. I will call the public hearing to order Tuesday, December 6, 2022, at 11:00 a.m. is time set for the public hearing in the matter of amending chapter two of the Benton County Code. All testimony, arguments and evidence received during this public hearing must be directed towards the subject of the proposed code amendment. The hearing procedure will be as follows. Staff will present staff report. Next, any member of the public wishing to present general testimony will be given the opportunity to speak. Then we'll have testimony from any representative of another governmental body and opportunity for staff response. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is acceptable to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker. You have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by this body, they must be formally placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please submit the material to Erica Milo, who will make sure your evidence is properly taken care of. And Erica, if you could also please put your email in the chat, then anyone online can see that. Finally, I will ask if any commissioners need to declare any bias, conflict of interest or experte contacts.
No.
No. And I have none as well. So hearing none. Let's move on to the staff report.
So I suppose I could leave this off. Following the work session, I think it was last week, board directed staff to come back with some changes to essentially place the appeal process for contracting decisions before the CAO to pull it out of the department head arena. We've done that. We've also taken the direction from Board of Commissioners that we limit the scope of the appeal from a county administrator to the Board of Commissioners. If you'll look in the document that I handed out, which is the paired order with the red line, if you'll look in item five, that is the, the second sentence contains the scope of an appeal from a CAO decision to to the board, and that is the arbitrary, precious or bias. So we tried to narrow that down. It's, it's, it is now, I think, pretty, pretty straightforward. One of the things that I think is important to note is that there are very specific timelines. The last thing we want is to get into a spitting match over whether something was timely or not. Best to make it clear and, and defined in the, in the chat. So that's what we have done. Gary, and then you want to add, it's really based on the work sessions, pretty straightforward, I think. But we thought it was straightforward our last work session, so.
No, I think that, yeah, we, we heard that and Vance captured the, the information and made the changes and did clear up some of the notification periods that, you know, the deadlines for submitting appeals. And so it's a, it's a much cleaner document now. So I think that it does portray what the board directed us to do last week.
Yes, thank you very much. And Vance, to your credit, it was very straightforward last time around. We just wanted to take it slightly.
And that's why we have work sessions.
All right. So at this point, we will take public testimony. I'll ask for public testimony in the room first. So anyone in the room who'd like to provide public testimony? Seeing none, is there anyone online that would like to provide public testimony? See and hearing none. Is there any testimony from any representative of any other governmental body in the room or online? Seeing and hearing none? Do we need a staff response to that? Since there's nothing. All right. So I will expose the public hearing. And we will move into deliberations. Comments, questions?
Chair, I do have a question for the county attorney. Vance, I'm looking at item number three. Or revise that number three. And in there, it indicates upon receipt of the written appeal, the county administrative officer shall initiate an investigation of the appeal. The question I have for you is later on down in the document that refers to the concept about being able to appeal my decision to the board. And one of those items is was the, was I arbitrarily cretious or biased? And so the question I have for you relates to the word bias. And what I mean by that was if I were to receive a request for an initial appeal, if I had a conflict of interest or felt I did, or for some reason felt that I did have a bias, can I, does it, can I delegate that responsibility to a third party based on the way it's written? And if not, I think we should incorporate some other language incorporating my designee or the county administrators designee. If they do, if I do feel that person in the world feels as though they have a conflict of interest or a bias for some reason.
That is a very good question, because if the allegation is you're biased, now you shouldn't hear it. But the way this is written, there is no alternative. It is you or nobody. So with that said, I would, I would say that in item three, in the second sentence, we add the CAO. We add the C A O. Or his or her designate. Shall complete the investigation.
Or their designate.
Their, their.
So my only concern that is that it, I think, if we're gonna, that we should specify that it's.
Which shall not be the department head from which the appeal arose.
Okay, thoughts on it? I think that's an appropriate amendment. Okay, we don't need to put anything on there about the county administrator designate in the event that. County Administrator. Just worried about bias or however, you know, the pretty language would be.
Well, I would, I think that if when we get to arbitrary capricious, if. There is concern that there's a bias, there would, there should be a. Redirection of the investigation.
My.
Outset.
I think that that's what Nancy is suggesting, right? Well, so I just want to make sure that. That in a couple of years from now or five or 10 years from now, this is read as it still should be the city administrator's duty. And it's not. You know, if we're not specific about why they would choose a designate, then it might just be, oh, I'm kind of busy, so I'll just have it go to another director. Whereas I think we want to be intentional about having it go to the county administrator unless there is a case of bias. But so we're suggesting something like in the event of. Kind of conflict of interest on the part of the county administrator, the county administrator may designate. An alternate who shall not be the director of the Department of Origin for the contractor.
Okay, so again, in three. Suppose we just add a third sentence there that that says. In the event the county administrator feels a conflict of interest presents. He or she may.
They.
They may designate. An alternative who should not be a department head affiliated with the contract, yes, we can make that change.
Okay, let me ask this, can we put a pin in this, can we table this, you can write something and bring it back to us? In like, can we move off the agenda and come back to this or?
Yes, I can, I can do that. And I can send it to you all, including Gary. Yeah, so if you want to continue this. Until later in this public meeting, we can revisit it.
Motion for that or?
Nope, your, your choice.
All right, well, we will continue it until later in the meeting and we'll move on with the next agenda item. Thank you everyone for being flexible and Joe, thank you for catching that. Okay, let's see, where are we on the agenda? Next up, I have item four point four. COVID update from Department Operations Center and I see April Hall has joined us, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Wise, good morning, fairly morning, everyone, nice to be here today. I've got your COVID nineteen update, well, here we are in December. And there's a wintry mix of respiratory pathogens out there. From various cold viruses, influenza, COVID nineteen certainly, and respiratory syncytial virus or R S V. This combination is causing a lot of illness and disturbance in our communities. Of particular concern is an increase in pediatric hospitalizations. On November fourteenth, Governor Brown issued an executive order to give hospitals additional flexibility to staff beds for children. And allow them to draw on a pool of medical volunteer nurses and doctors and take other steps to provide care to pediatric patients. Hospitals will remain under severe strain as a combined surge of R S V influenza and COVID nineteen. Continues to increase and then hopefully slowly declines over the next few weeks. According to the latest O H S U modeling. R S V cases appear to have reached a peak. Hopefully, but unfortunately, influenza cases have started a sharp rise in COVID nineteen cases. And hospitalizations are increasing as well right now. So the best things we can do right now is to ensure that we're up to date with COVID nineteen vaccinations. And go get that flu vaccine if you haven't already this year. Unfortunately, uptake for flu vaccine is low this year. Relative to to the last handful of years, the vaccine is really well matched to circulating strains. And while someone who's vaccinated may still get flu, they'll be less ill than without it and they'll be much less likely to transmit it to someone else. If they've been vaccinated. There's a lot of illnesses out there in schools and in workplaces right now. Our communicable disease team continues to provide infection prevention guidance to help reduce transmission and and a lot of outbreaks. That are occurring right now. So to help reduce transmission in addition to those vaccines, please wash your hands frequently with soap and water. Avoid touching your face, stay home when ill, when possible. Cover those coughs and sneezes and please consider masking indoors right now, especially when in a crowd or when traveling. So I have a few pieces of COVID data, but I hope to keep this. The rest of this report rather brief for you and happy to answer any questions after that, so. Our CDC reported case rate for COVID is one hundred twelve per a hundred thousand residents. Which is up from fifty nine when we last provided an update about a month ago. Locally, our testing positivity rate has increased in the past month from about five percent positive test to eight percent positive tests and. When we see that rate creep up to around ten percent or higher, it can indicate a lot of transmission and and the need for more testing. Hospitalizations, as I said earlier, have likewise increased and specifically for COVID nineteen are increasing. As of November thirtieth, the total hos- number of hospitalized patients in Oregon was at three hundred sixty three. Which is a fifty percent increase from the two hundred forty one reported on October thirtieth, so month over month. And COVID nineteen hospitalizations are expected to peak in the next week or two at around four hundred eight people hospitalized. And in region two, coming down to our, our region with Lynn, Ben, Lingahoke, Marion and Yamhill Counties. Forty six people were hospitalized with COVID nineteen as of the last day of November. And across the month of November, those regional hospitalizations ranged from a low of thirteen up to fifty three. On any given day with an average of thirty three a day. Looking at wastewater surveillance, data through the end of November show increased activity. Over the last four weeks across the state. And Corvallis wastewater data is showing a sustained increase, so. We do expect to continue to see increased activity for a while here in in the area. And then finally, regarding COVID vaccination, bivalent boosters for the youngest eligible age groups. So six months to five years are expected to be available sometime mid-December, so keep. An eye on our website for more information on that. And and primary and booster COVID vaccines continue to be widely available in pharmacies and providers offices. We will host community events in December, but I do want to share that funding to continue community vaccination clinics. Is uncertain at this time. Our partners at O H A will keep us abreast as funding decisions are made for twenty twenty three. Even if community vaccination clinics with partners are discontinued, Benton County will continue to provide. Robust effort to ensure opportunities for vaccination for our most vulnerable residents. That's all I have in terms of updates for you, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, comments or questions? Not at this time, thank you. Thank you so much, April. All right, with that, we can move on to the next agenda item. Item four point five, discuss revising fees for permits, applications and services in public works. Community Development and Planning Division for twenty twenty three. And also with Gary Stockoff. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. I, I can take care of the public work ones, you'll see the, towards the end of the year packet, the various. Forms and charts that have our items on them with the increases or no increases. In that set of spreadsheets, I would bring your attention to a couple of items, one on page. Two, towards the bottom where it says other off-roaded, other road-related fees or permits. You'll notice the third one down is the no, no spray permit. Per your direction earlier this year, that has been eliminated, so that is a change that I would like to highlight. And then on the next page, under land development, the third block down. Is erosion and sediment control permit. So what we're doing is that we're bumping this one for the twenty twenty two year. By that five percent to accommodate or take care of the inflation, but. We know in March, the new regulations kick in and in talking with Darren's folks and ours. We are just not sure what that is going to translate to for a fee, so. Probably once we get our legs under a little bit and understand better the impacts. Of what the new program and the conditions around it mean. We will come back for the twenty twenty three update, probably towards late spring, early summer, but we need a lot of. Information and facts and figures to figure out what that would have to be. But it will be, it will be a significant change in how we have to process those permits. So with that, I will step aside and answer any questions you might have.
All right, comments or questions? And here's some whispering next to me, so I'm not sure when it results in a question or. Okay. And then I guess we can, we're ready for Gary Nichols with Community Development. Welcome back.
Okay, thank you very much, good morning. And thank you, Gary, for that quick overview, I'll come back around to erosion, setup and control in the same, just to underscore what Gary said in a minute. But. What you're seeing here, first of all, from community development is our planning division fees only. Our building permit fees are set in part by the state of Oregon every year in April. Bring those back to you in a separate package as we always do in the spring. What you're looking at today is just the planning department, planning division fees. Across the board, proposing a five percent increase, basically to keep up with inflation as best we can. With a couple of exceptions, and I want to just highlight those as we go through, so first of all. You'll see some words in red font, we changed the description there in the spreadsheet, just to be more clear about what those fees are. If you have questions about that, I'm happy to answer that, but it's an early attempt. From community development staff to be more clear about what we are charging for. And I would say that's a precursor to taking a hard look at our fees across the board, which we'd like to do in the, in the coming year, so. Since we haven't had time to do that kind of holistic look yet, we're proposing the five percent. And the five percent increase that we're proposing is to the base fees only, so that's to the, the part of the fee that we. We collect for our staff time and costs, it's not for some of the ancillary pass-through fees. For instance, when we post a legal ad, that's part of a planning commission decision, we're not proposing to touch those fees yet, but. I believe that we should in the, in the coming year, take a hard look at all of those accro- costs holistically. So. I said with one exception, we're proposing a new fee as it relates to land use, any land use application in. The landfill site zone and it's really based on our two thousand and twenty two. Ex- or sorry, two thousand and twenty one experience with the conditional use permit application that you all are now very familiar with. The proposal to expand landfill, we took in a fee of, as you can see there, about twenty three hundred dollars. And just a rough calculation of staff time in there for community development only, not including our colleagues at Public Works. Or on the planning commission, we're well over forty thousand dollars in costs, and so. You know, we try to, we try to be a value proposition. For our customers, but we feel like that warrants increasing the fee, so what we're proposing. For this year is to set a base fee of ten thousand dollars. And then actually charge for actual costs, so if it's, if the, if we have less than ten thousand dollars of staff time, that would. Lead to a refund, more likely, we would keep track of our time and materials related to any subsequent. Condition use permits or other landy sections in the. Landfill site zone. And then charge on an actual cost basis, so I hope I made that clear. The point is, you know, we only see these every ten or twenty years and they tend to be substantial efforts, so this is an effort to recoup. The time and materials that we put into them. To be clear, one of the recommendations put forward to you in the assessment of kind of following the conditioning use permit. Is that Benton County hire outside planning expertise and outside counsel to help with the next one. So this is a way of recouping those costs as well. So, happy to entertain questions or direction from the board.
Comments or questions?
Darren, would you elaborate a little bit on what your plans are for across the board? Of the review in this coming year?
Yeah, thank you, you probably know we've had a substantial staff turnover in the last year or so, so. And we've been doing some internal restructuring, how we handle both building permit application reviews and land use reviews. And I think this is a perfect opportunity for us. Over the next several months to keep track of how much time we spend on different types of applications. And then make some kind of targeted or tailored adjustments to our fee structure. Based on what it actually takes us to do the work, I think in some of these cases, we're probably charging more than we need to. In other cases, we may need to raise those fees to accurately reflect how much time we're spending in these areas. For example, we, we still charge a planning review fee for the demolition of an existing dwelling. That used to be in conjunction with a building permit, but the building, the building code no longer requires. Our building official to review a demolition, so it's, it's a planning only. Exercise right now, which we need to continue to do. In part to preserve dwelling rights on rural properties. And and basically to put property owners on notice of kind of their rights that are associated with the demolition of a dwelling. So we need to continue to do that, but the nature of that review has changed, I think fundamentally, so kind of on a line-by-line basis, we just need to go through our fees. And remind ourselves. Why we collect these fees and and then adjust as needed to reflect the time that we spend on them.
Thank you.
I think that the approach that you have both described makes sense, thank you for hearing us when it comes to the. Some of the fees that we didn't like, Gary. And. I would be happy to forth the motion when we're ready. Yes, now are we, we're not approving this today, it's just going to a work session, correct? This is just going to a, it's going to. Word meeting. Yes, we're in the work session now, forwarding to a future. Yes, yes. Please. I would move to forward orders, setting fees for public works, community development and planning for twenty twenty three to the December twentieth, twenty twenty two board meeting.
Did you say it in December twentieth?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye, 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 motion carries. Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you.
And let's see, are we ready to go back to the public hearing or shall we move to the hope discussion?
I think hopefully I have captured what we all.
Thank you. All right, so we are now back into the section on chapter two, Benton County, amending Benton County Code. And county council. So I see you've given us this highlighted. I'm going to read it for the record. Uh, the added part, if the C O believes they may be biased or presented with a conflict of interest, they may appoint and designate who shall not be part of the department whose contract of that issue to conduct the investigation and reach a decision. That sounds acceptable to me. Thoughts from my fellow commissioners? County administrator?
Actually, I think it captures, uh, uh, what my intent was. Thank you.
Very good. All right. At this point, are we ready to entertain a motion?
Yeah, uh, I will, um, move to approve ordinance number 2022 days zero three one five, amended county code, chapter two, to replace the contract appeal process. And to conduct the first reading.
A second. Oh, is that, but maybe I want to back up just one second. Is that a motion to approve as amended?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. Motion made, uh, as amended and seconded. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Motion carries. Mr. Cohen, is there something you'd like to read?
I, I will happily read it. Um, for the board of commissioners for the state of Oregon, for the county of Benton, in the matter of mending B C C, chapter two, to replace the contract appeal process ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash zero three one five. Benton County Board of Commissioners hereby ordain as follows. Short title, this ordinance shall be known as amendment to Benton County Code, Chapter Two, County Contracts. So this will come back for a second reading on December twentieth. Uh, and when it will become effective on January nineteenth. So just putting you on notice, somebody else will have to be reading this since I will not be here.
All right. Very good. All right. Well, thank you, and I, um, appreciate, uh, everyone's flexibility and patience. And sometimes these things happen when, you know, this is your sausage making when you're in a public, we're in the public light. So we got it done. Thank you, everyone. All right. That will bring us to item four point six, discussion, uh, twenty twenty-three housing opportunity of planning equity, hope. Work plan development. And I believe we have Suzanne Hoffman with us today, who will be, uh, helping us with this conversation.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, I know that, uh, the Hope Advisory Board is in that process of looking ahead, uh, to twenty, uh, twenty-three and discussing um, ideas about the best, uh, use of, of the advisory board's time and it's, um, passionate and committed members. Uh, I know that Julie Arena, our staff support to the board is going to be talking with them, I believe, next week to gather their feedback, uh, about the ways in which they think they could be, uh, best utilized. Uh, and I think the city of Corvallis is having this conversation with the city council as well, uh, the same as you are all having today. Uh, I, I, it may be difficult to land on a specific plan until we get a little farther into January of the new year. Uh, but I think to begin to gather ideas and feedback and hear thoughts about that now is a good course of action. Uh, a couple of things that I wanted to share with you all for your consideration. Uh, it is our, uh, implementation effort of, uh, House Bill forty-one twenty-three. As you'll recall, that's the coordinated effort or office, uh, joint effort, uh, on homeless response for our community and our current formal partnership for implementation of that coordinated effort is City of Corvallis, Benton County, and Community Services Consortium. All three of us have signed the memorandum of understanding on that so far. And we have outreach planned to other cities in Benton County to welcome them to be a part of that formal coordinated effort as well. And as you also may recall, there are different, uh, major components to implement. Uh, we received, um, a million dollars for this effort. And it entails the formation of a five-year strategic plan, a sustainable funding model. Uh, looking at what kind of structure beyond what we currently already have may be necessary to support that strategic plan. What the variety of funding sources might be out there that could be helpful in, in implementing those things. So all that is coming forth in the coming months. Uh, and one of the major roles, uh, that the Hope Advisory Board is poised to play is, uh, to fulfill one of the required roles in House Bill forty-one twenty-three. Uh, and that is our stakeholder coordination board is that how it is referred to, but it basically is very much what the Hope Advisory Board has already been doing. Uh, and as we roll along with our community partners, developing that five-year strategic plan, the Hope Advisory Board would be key to, uh, staying up to date on progress and providing feedback into that process uh, along the way. Uh, and they would also play that role of, uh, which they already do beautifully of helping with outreach, community engagement and communication. And they have informed our efforts around that and our ambassadors, uh, to the community, carrying the message and communication out to others as well. And, and that is another key role that is called out in House Bill forty-one twenty-three and that we would ask them to continue playing. I also want to call out the, um, we are ahead of some of the other jurisdictions that are engaged in, in this effort. In that, our Hope Advisory Board already met for many months, worked very hard, um, despite some of the delays that COVID nineteen created for that board, uh, and their work to develop the recommended, uh, policies that came forth, uh, to the city of Corvallis City Council and to you all that were accepted. And that our joint team has already been working in the way of implementation planning on those policies. That will be a significant component of the strategic plan. So we feel like, um, even though the Hope Advisory Board may be waiting to hear what their formal role will be with regard to this implementation. They've already contributed a significant body of work, um, that will inform all of this going forward and, and really be the, the touchstone. Uh, regardless of how best practices may evolve or funding sources may materialize. Those policy recommendations are, are really what we keep drawing back to. Uh, so going forward in twenty twenty-three, one of the other considerations I hope that you all and the city council will consider is that it, it may be time to shift the intensity of focus a little bit away from the advisory board and more toward the actual implementation of those policy recommendations. And in doing that, as you know, we have a project manager, uh, we have a program coordinator who provides a great deal of staff support to the Hope Advisory Board. Uh, and we have a contracted grant writer and researcher as well as, uh, the redirection of part of our health department communications coordinator to that effort. What will be incredibly beneficial to our implementation efforts is if our, uh, program coordinator, Julie can shift some of her focus from supporting the board as intensely as she has for many months and, uh, shift a bit more toward, uh, being an implement member of our implementation team. She already is at that table. She already is contributing. Uh, we can make greater progress if we have, uh, more of her time geared to that. And, and not suggesting in any way that she wouldn't continue to support the Hope Advisory Board. Of course she, she would. I'm just wondering if, um, if it turns out that the frequency of their meetings in the coming year or the duration of each meeting or the number of topics on which they may choose to focus, um, is not as time-consuming as it has been, uh, in the past year or two, that that would be helpful, uh, toward our implementation effort. Uh, we're not looking for a whole slew of new policy recommendations. But we are looking for their ongoing feedback, uh, with regard to how we implement and when we implement and getting support for various aspects of implementation. So I, I'll leave you with that and be happy to answer any questions that I can for you today or go and get you answers to bring back to you if it would help with your thought process here. I apologize that Julie Reno is unable to join us today. Uh, but, uh, she is, we can certainly draw on her for, um, input and support during this process as we can Rebecca Taylor, our project manager.
Thank you. Commissioner Ojo, go ahead. And then I would have some things I'd like to say as well.
Sure. Um, I, I think that, uh, we're adjusting the amount of time that we spend, uh, on supporting the Hope Advisory Board. Certainly makes sense, uh, given that a lot of the heavy lifting, as you mentioned, uh, has been, um, accomplished, but I, I guess I, what I'm left a, a little uncertain about is, um, how whose responsibility the, the strategic planning itself is, um, and is that going to be uh, led, um, at a staff level by this joint office and then presented to the Hope Advisory Board members and, and then, and the greater community in that context? Or will the Hope Advisory Board itself have some greater role in constructing what that strategic plan looks like? Um, eh, that's my, my, I guess my biggest question, because I see that as the, along with implementation as uh, a key part of the work that needs to be done in the next year.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, uh, yeah, I, I think you've described it completely accurately that the primary responsibility of the joint office, uh, staff is to ensure that that strategic plan uh, comes into being. And of course, we don't do that in a vacuum and we don't do that by ourselves, but it is our responsibility to lead and accomplish that effort. And so the structure we currently have in place for the joint office, uh, is co-directed by myself and Paul Ballata, Community Development Director for City of Corvallis, as well as Peggy McGuire, Executive Director for Community Services Consortium. Uh, and of course, our staff, project manager, program coordinator are our only two folks who are full-time focused on this work. And our project manager would, is taking the lead in orchestrating, uh, the framework for moving forward with creating that strategic plan. Our entire team will be engaged in that effort as well as the Hope Advisory Board and many other community members, um, and the Hope Advisory Board, aside from, um, influencing and providing feedback and guidance and advice, uh, that will inform that strategic plan, uh, may also some of them or all of them, either in their role as advisory board members or the other roles that they may play in the community, we may also ask them to be a part of different, uh, groups, um, to engage in that process.
Okay. Um, I, I think my biggest concern with the, uh, H B four, one, two, three money was that we would spend too much time on process and not enough time on getting things done. Um, and I hope that, uh, we do have the right, strike the right balance between, um, taking the twelve recommendations we have and refashioning them as a strategic plan, um, for the office and the enterprise um, of a joint office, but at the same time continuing to focus on implementation of those recommendations.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. Absolutely. And, and toward that effort, uh, we've already been talking about how, you know, as, as we first, uh, re-received and, and you all accepted those twelve recommendations. Um, I think it was, it was, uh, easy to think about them in a linear fashion. Even though I believe that you and others who were deeply engaged saw that there were many intersections and connectivity. And, and the notion that you could choose one to focus on, um, i-is about as unfeasible as trying to focus on all of them at the same time. There's something in the strategic plan that we want to bring forth that will, um, reflect that interconnectivity. Um, so that instead of saying, you know, which one should we focus on this month or next month or next year? It is more of an interconnected plan that shows how these things move together. In some cases consecutively, some cases overlapping, and in some cases maybe very separately. And, and, and see it more as, as that, um, interconnected effort that I think you've been pointing out for some time, uh, we need to do in terms of how we view this. And we do not plan to spend all of the time in process. But certainly equal time making progress with actual implementation, which we, we do today and plan to continue to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Good questions, good answers. Um, I'm going to try to keep my comments at a, a high level. Um, so as the current, um, let's say Natalie is on, I'm on the executive board, but as the current commissioner um, on the executive committee, um, I acknowledge that the work that Hope does has been doing is significantly important. Um, I think that this is a good time for us to change things up a little bit. Um, and Suzanne, you mentioned having, uh, Julie shift her focus more towards implementation and working behind the scenes. And I think that is a great opportunity for her. I think that we should, um, support giving her this opportunity. Um, and I think that will be um, a big difference maker in getting this hard work done. Um, you know, I, I acknowledge that Hope's roles, you know, outreach, communication, um, support in, in being another set of eyes on that, that five-year strategic plan. All that is very important. Um, what I want to make sure that we're not doing, you know, what Hope did all this heavy lifting to come up with the twelve recommendations. And I just want to make sure that we are giving adequate time, um, and bandwidth to our staff to actually work on those and implement them rather than saying, okay, we got all that work done. Let's hurry up and find some more work to do. You know, that would not be good. Um, so I do support the Hope Board, um, pulling back a little bit and just taking more of a support um, role. I will say lately, most of our meetings have been comprised of an educational component, which is good and it's very interesting. But I'm not sure it's always, you know, the best use of time. So, I mean, it is what it is. There's pros and cons to that. So, um, I guess my, my input here is that I support, um, what you've laid out. Suzanne. Other comments, questions?
Uh, similar comment. Uh, I, I appreciate the uh, you know, the evolving nature of, uh, this effort and, and, oh, kudos to the group for, um, being, uh, recognized with, uh, uh, House Bill four, one, two, three, um, that, uh, uh, will aid the, the, the shift to, uh, more of a implementation type focus. So uh, looking forward to, uh, hearing more about just the, the shift in focus, uh, in the upcoming year.
All right. Uh, other comments, questions? Uh, Suzanne, do you, what else do you need from us?
Uh, don't need anything else from, from you today. I, I trust that Commissioner Wise, you'll be, uh, taking feedback, uh, back to the Hope executive committee and to the overall advisory board, as will the city council liaison, uh, members. And, uh, I'll just assure you that we'll, uh, we'll come back to you with the regular updates about implementation of House Bill forty-one twenty-three. We are, um, getting a, a good deal of, uh, coordination and facilitation support from the Association of Oregon Counties and League of Oregon Cities, who pulls all of the counties who, uh, are engaged in the separate together to learn from each other, uh, see what's going on in different local areas that, that, uh, we can, and, and sharing materials along the way too. So that's, um, a, a much appreciated, uh, level of effort on their part, and we'll be happy to bring you updates about that along the way as well, so that you'll not only know, uh, where we're moving, but, uh, where, uh, the other counties engaged in this effort are moving as well.
Very good. Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon. All right. Uh, with that, we can move into, back into the business meeting with the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve or change?
I would move approval of the concept calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, that takes us to old business, item seven point one, in the matter of adoption of order number twenty twenty-two dash zero eight one for revised fee schedule for environmental health with April Holland and Scott Krueger. Welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'll be, uh, I'll be the representative for this one today.
Perfect. Perfect.
Thanks. So this is my, the first time that I've requested. The, the signing of an order that's not about COVID masking. When we last met, the board approved the adjusted environmental health fee schedule. And we're coming back today in hopes that you will. Agree to sign the order.
We have to make a motion, please do. I move to approve order D twenty-two-two dash zero eight one, implementing the proposed twenty-two-three fee schedule for environmental health. Effective January one, twenty-two-three.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Ask, what is the process now going forward from this? We're done? Perfect. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along to new business. We have item eight point one. In the matter of an updated memorandum of agreement between the Fair Board and the Board of Commissioners. And then, I have a question for the county administrator. So we received this document this morning.
That's correct.
Could you give us a little bit of?
You've got.
Details about.
Commissioner Ojo, in, in your packets was a clean version of the changes and it was hard to delineate what the changes were. Commissioner Ojo had asked for a redline copy. And so I don't have a official redline copy for you, but I do have staff notes that came from Lynn McKee. That identify in general the changes that were made, and that's what's been placed in front of you this morning.
Okay, perfect. And we will have a copy of this put in with the minutes. Is that correct?
We can.
Yes, yes.
And just a little bit of background on my concern, though, I was an active participant when we put together this agreement previously. At, in my role as liaison to the Fair Board and it was. A challenging process and not straightforward, so I wasn't clear to me from the. Checklist that a company need this item, that this was purely technical updates to. Put this agreement into the framework of natural areas, of parks and events. And I see now that it is completely just a set of technical changes.
Perfect. And you know, I, I agree. I think it's always helpful to have a clean version and a redline version when possible. In our packet, that way we can, you know, see changes easily.
Agreed. We're going to make that a standard practice.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Commissioner, I was actually looking to see Lynn was joining us, and I don't see her quite yet.
I don't think you're John, John, right?
Thank you. Commissioner, I don't see Lynn McKee joining us virtually at this point.
Okay. Well, let me ask this, Commissioners, do you feel comfortable moving ahead and voting on this?
Yes.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Fair Board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on to item eight point two, in the matter of adoption of order twenty-two-two dash zero eight six. Granting Honey Brian catering sole source exemption. I also have Lynn McKee listed. So maybe she'll pop on here any, any minute. Any questions?
If you want to move on to the next one, I can step out and try and reach Lynn, because she's been dealing with Honey Brian directly. And let's go that she share her insight with you.
Okay, we will do that. So we, as previously stated, we do not have item eight point three today. That has been pushed back to December twentieth. So that will bring us to item eight point four, in the matter of adoption of order number twenty-two-two dash zero eight four. Revising the fee schedule for civil division real and personal property sales. And we have with us Dawn Dale and Dean Barnes from Benton County Sheriff's Office. Please come on up to the table and make sure you speak into the microphone.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes, welcome.
So we're here this morning to ask for revision of the fee schedule for the civil division. Real and personal property sales. The fee schedule is associated with the real property and property sales for the civil division. The Sheriff's Office initially set these fees back in December twenty twenty. And then. Due to wages with the deputies and with our civil staff. And the union contracts have gone through, we need to raise those fees up. Those fees are associated with the preparing, conducting and finalizing the sales of the real property. And personal property. Hello, Dean, if you want to talk a little bit about what those fees are?
Yes, quickly, I'm Dean Barnes, I'm the Benton County Sheriff's Office Civil Deputy, so I'm the one that conducts all these real property judicial foreclosures. So yeah, the, the costs associated with conducting these sales is a myriad of. Documents that are required per statute that have to be turned into the courts in my time of. Sending a notice of sale to OSA, the Gazette Times, preparing notice of levy. Preparing certificate of sale, notice of completed sale, I could go on, but. Just a lot of details and, and documents required to conduct these judicial foreclosures.
All right, thank you.
So what we're asking is that we increase the fees for the patrol staff, increase it from sixty-four dollars and eighty cents an hour. To sixty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. And then for the civil staff to increase those rate fees from forty-four dollars and seventy cents to fifty-one dollars and seventy-two cents an hour.
Would you be expecting to come back next year with another fee increase or perhaps continue every other year?
Yeah, so actually what I do and what really affects this is that. So the deputies, I take the average, so even though there's a percentage that's increased through their union contract. If I have a lot endewer versus higher pay, that average then kind of makes me look at. When we would come back to you guys. So we came in twenty twenty, there really wasn't, when I did the average, there wasn't a significant amount of change. And so that's why we didn't come back last year. This year, all of the union contracts had a significant increase. And so that really affected that. And so that made us come back this year to ask. Dean did a analysis to kind of look at during twenty twenty, we didn't have any of these. So there was, the fee didn't really, wasn't affected. In twenty twenty-one, he had three that came forward and then he had four, so it's not a substantial amount. But we do like to have that the fee that we're passing on is relevant to the fees that we're paying in wages. To the staff that's doing this work.
Thank you.
All right, other comments or questions? All right, any motions?
I would move to approve the revised fee schedule for the sales of real and personal property conducted by the Benton County Sheriff's Office Civil Division.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn and Dean.
Thank you.
Almost sounds like a band.
All right, so I believe we can go to item eight point two. In the matter of adopting order number twenty-two-two dash zero eight six. Granting Honey Brian catering sole source exemption, and I will welcome back Lynn McKee.
Thank you. Apologies for my being late. I was monitoring you online and all of a sudden it just escalated. So thank you for approving our Fair Board MOA. It has been serving us well, I think, for the last five years. I think it really clarified a lot of operational questions that we have had. So thank you for getting that renewed for another five years, that'd be great. So for the. For the sole source, as you're aware, we have a food concessionaire in the Adair Clubhouse that was valley catering for years. And so when she went out of business during COVID, we were fortunate to get Kate Lynch from Forks and Quarks to take over. That contract, and it ends December thirty-first this year. So a few months ago, Kate Lynch had advised Jesse Otney that she was going to be selling her businesses and moving to the East Coast. And so we were very concerned, like, oh my gosh, how are we going to find a food concessionaire for Adair Clubhouse? But Kate herself has been trying to market her business to sell her interests. Because she had expended a lot of time and money on the Adair Clubhouse. If you've been in there, you're aware of how nice it looks. So she did all the fixtures, the tile works, the new carpets and everything, while we as the county did all the landlord exterior kind of work. And so she has been shopping around her business to other caterers. And she has identified Honey Brian Catering, who is interested in purchasing all of her equipment and fixtures, as well as taking. On the contract with us as a food concessionaire. So we have Jesse and I have met with Emily Vacy, the owner of Honey Brian Catering. She seems very capable. She has all the appropriate licensing for the kitchen. She is currently working out of a commercial kitchen in Albany. And what I really like about her as well is she does a number of these. These dinners, the farm-to-fork kind of, she works with a lot of local farms. And so she wants to bring that to Adair Clubhouse. She's excited to get any vet space. And, and since Kate has already kind of gone out and, and done a market survey of caterers in the area. And identified Emily as about the only one who is willing to take on Adair Clubhouse. It's, it's kind of an odd location, and so we're excited to have somebody there. So we would like to seek a sole source to, for us to be able to go into a contract with Honey Brian Catering to do the concessionaire. Or a dear clubhouse.
Right, comments or questions?
The current contract ends at the end of the month, is that correct?
Yes, and Kate's all paid up to the end of the month. And so, and Emily is ready to take on the contract as of January first. She's ready to leave her contract with the current commercial kitchen that she's with, and which is great. I mean, right away, somebody's monitoring that space, they're managing it, she's taking over the utilities, which is huge, because that water bill is. Ugly every month. We don't want to have to pay that. So she's ready to take, take it on as of January first, and so we're very excited about that.
What, what's the length of the new contract?
It will probably be, right now, we're looking at like a three-year term. And so hopefully that's something that she's ready to enter into, and then we can renew it from there, but I think we would be looking at a three-year window.
And as I understand it, that what we have in the packet is a proposal from Honey Brian Catering in terms of how it might be structured. Agreement might be structured in the revenue stream.
Yes, because she's, because she is just starting a new business. She is interested in going into an agreement where she would pay fifty percent rent for the first year, seventy-five percent, and go to full rent in the third year of the contract. And, you know, and we certainly acknowledge the, the challenges that will be, because the Adair Clubhouse. Was difficult for Kate to market post-COVID. It's been kind of a challenging space for her. In a valley catering, had a certain clientele that has kind of disappeared post-COVID. So we recognize that any food vendor, any food concessionaire is going to have to build kind of a business from scratch in that space. And so we acknowledged her needing to be able to kind of ramp up to full rent. And, and we would be willing to do that negotiation with any food concessionaire if they were. If they will take on the rest of the building and the utilities and the, and the property tax and the other items that she's covering.
Okay.
Lynn, can you provide a little bit more context? I think that we did something similar with the current provider.
Yes, when Kate Lynch took it over, we also ramped up, because she was, actually she paid no. Rent initially from COVID, then she went, then she began to ramp up full rent, because knowing, because she took it on right in the middle of COVID. When she really wasn't even being able to rent it, but she knew that she was going to be spending all this time on fixing it up. So she wouldn't have been able to rent it during that time anyway, so we kind of gave her that free rent during that time. She was investing so much time and energy. And really, you know, making it a really nice facility, and she has, it's, has everyone been in there at this point? Yeah, because it looks really good now.
Well, and, and I think that makes sense. You've got a facility that hasn't had much activity in several years. And so it really is. Starting from zero and, and. Having significant upfront costs. I, I'm inclined to agree to take it easy, get somebody in there, ma- make sure they're. Have the best chance of being successful and. And then start. Getting to more of the market rate.
Yes, because, and we've seen the same thing. We are starting to crank up at the fairgrounds, but we are not at pre-COVID numbers yet. So we, we certainly see that, you know, and other, any food concessionaire is going to have to kind of start from scratch and bringing business back to that facility. So we want to partner with them and make sure that they are successful, because it works well for us to not. I was worried when Kate told us a few months ago she was leaving, I thought, oh no, we're going to have to start renting it and, oh my. So we're very happy to have somebody in there who's really monitoring that space and, and using it for that community, especially as Adair is really trying to. You know, expand and, and do master planning. We're doing master planning at the North Albany Park. I, I mean, Adair Park right across the street, we had an event at the Adair Clubhouse for that. So, you know, there's a lot happening in Adair Village, and so I think the Adair Clubhouse can be a big part of that.
Yep, and I would say as the Adair Village liaison, it's something that they think is very important. They highlight as being advantageous to their city is having someone in that space, so I think it's good all the way around.
Sounds good. What is your timeline then for getting this contract finalized?
So Emily is waiting anxiously for my word on how we do today. And so as soon as that is done, I'm going to prepare a contract, zip it through Vance, and she is ready to sign and start January first.
Okay, well, I, that, I had, I had questions, but that satisfies me.
Okay.
Very good. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move to approve order number twenty-two-two zero eight-five, sole source exemption for Honey Brian Catering to enter into a contract with Benton County. As the Adair Clubhouse Food Concessionaire.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
All right, Vance, I'll be attached.
All right, very good. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, we will move into item eight point five, in the matter of accepting two fifty-foot easements for road right-of-way and utility purposes from Legacy Estates LLC. For the subdivision plat Legacy Estates. And I have listed Laurel Byer and David Malone from Public Works.
Neither.
I'm sending in for them, because I got back from my vacation.
You found out you got voluntold?
So I came back, it was really.
Well, we're happy to have you here.
There's two fifty-foot easements for roadway and utility purposes, and it's requested by Benton County, along with our engineering staff. From, from Legacy Estate LLC, Sandra Billwalk, she's the manager, she's also the owner of the property. Most people notice the Blueberry Patch, the Blueberry Property on Aubrey Road. And they changed the name to Legacy Estates. The roads are all, all built, this is the connectivity to the north and south that we want to get for future roads. If you don't get them now, we're going to build over them. And so this is the, the idea is to put an easement, it gives us some more leverage to actually dedicate the road in the future. And so that's, that's the reasoning behind the two easements.
Thank you. Comments, questions, motion?
I will find my page here.
I think it's page two oh eight.
I'm moving to accept both fifty-foot easements from Legacy Estates LLC for road right-of-way and utility purposes.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
I have the original document for the chair to sign. And I can, and then give them back to me to record with the plat. Plat is actually what's planning department right now. We'll see where's that, with this. So let's give the.
I believe, yes, you want to leave it with Erica? And then we'll get it taken care of.
Let me know when you sign it. I will have a plat. Soon in the future, has been signed by everyone, but I'll, I'll contact you and.
I still have my special pen, so. Okay, well, with that, we can move on to departmental requests. Item nine point one, request for formal initiation of stormwater amendments to the Belt and Code. And I have Greg Marrett listed. Let's see who we have online. Nope, I see Gordon Kurtz, welcome.
Greetings.
Greetings. I suppose I could get started without Greg because his portion of this initial presentation is is second in the in the grouping. So I had a presentation and I think Erica was gonna put it up for me. Is that correct?
All right, just a moment to get that going.
Sure. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Erica, was that in the packet? Do you know?
I believe that Greg emailed it to you this morning, if I am not mistaken.
You're searching for it right now.
Okay, no worries. I I could also share a screen if if that would be easier.
And here is Greg. Apologies, I know it's one of those days. It's been a crazy agenda.
Yeah, we're looking for the PowerPoint, I think.
There we go. So Greg, shall I just launch you into this? Okay, all right, thanks.
Commissioners, we are before you today to request you to initiate code amendments to the development code regarding stormwater. Staff has been working on this topic actually for a while, but we are now ready to head to public hearing. And so we have a overview presentation to give to you. We're going to try and keep it brief and to the point, understanding your long meeting. So it's been a partnership between Public Works and Community Developments on this whole project. So Gordon is going to lead you through the first part of the PowerPoint and then I will add some details about the code amendments at the end.
Awesome, okay. So I should I should note that this water quality and the DEQ regulations are relatively acronym dense. And so the first one is the National Pollute Discharge Elimination System, which is NPDES. Is basically something that came out of the Clean Water Act and has been implemented for larger communities in the phase one and smaller communities like ours are phase two. So we can go to that first slide, which has all the which has all of these acronyms. I only published this because it could be used as a reference later on. I think most of you are familiar with these with with these acronyms, but like I said, I put it here so that we can scan back to it if you if you need to and also so you have a reference for for the future. So next slide, we'll get into the meat of this. The phase two implementation plan really started back in the early two thousands and it it contains six control measures and those six control measures are focused on what is referred to as non-point source pollution. The photo at the right there is, I I put it here because it could be interpreted as two different things. A point source is is something that's just spewing pollution directly into the water. A non-point source is is a sort of, it comes from numerous sites and then reaches concentration once it hits, once it hits waterways or conveniences. The 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 picture at the right, it could be a non-point source source of of pollution. It could also be something that was coming directly out of a single source. So I used it to illustrate that really the cumulative effect is the same in the long run is that you're dumping large quantities of either metals or suspended solids or something like that into the water, which is terrible for aquatic health. This whole program was mandated by the EPA. Came out of, as I mentioned before, it came out of Clean Water Act and it is implemented then through Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. They issued a permit to us and there are these six control measures that we have mostly addressed. We have taken care of the first three and the sixth. And the the ones that we're currently working on are number four and five, construction site runoff control and post-construction stormwater management in new development redevelopment. These measures need to be implemented by the twenty eighth of February. And so we're running up on time here as per usual, but and we currently have standards for construction site runoff control and post-construction stormwater management, but the thresholds and the requirements are changing and becoming more rigorous. So if we go to the next slide, I'll start making some comparisons here. The current standards basically say that if you disturb, if you're having a construction site, if you're doing a development and it results in an acre or more of grounds disturbance, you have to get a twelve hundred C permit from the from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. It basically deals with erosion and sediment control, spill control, that kind of stuff. Once they've obtained this twelve hundred C permit, they you are required then to come to Benton County and get an erosion and sediment control permit as well. This dual permitting this over this is sort of redundant permitting is is a trait of this of this regulation. And it's unfortunate, but it is really unavoidable due to the language of the of the of the permit. Currently, if you're under an acre of disturbance, you don't need a DEQ permit or a Benton County ESC permit. So in the next slide, we'll take a look at what the proposed standards are. And basically, the proposed standards say that developments that disturb a quarter of an acre or more must obtain a Benton County erosion and sediment control permit. And the standards for one acre or more remain the same. So the threshold for a DEQ permit, the twelve hundred C permit, which is relatively time consuming and an expensive permit to obtain, is still one acre. But we have to develop a permitting system for disturbance of a quarter acre or more, which drops that threshold substantially and and will and will affect a lot of building permits. So in the next slide, so those those last two slides were addressing control measure four, which is the construction site standards, the erosion and sediment control. The the impacts that are done during development. Post-construction stormwater is what happens with water after the site is completely developed and currently if you disturb more than an acre and you've and you've received a Benton County permit. It varies as to what level of rigor is assigned to your post-construction stormwater management. If you're in the urban growth boundary, you usually have to comply with the with the standards of the adjacent jurisdiction. The the governing jurisdiction, the city of Fallon Miss, North Albany, City of Corvallis. But projects under the one acre threshold don't need to address post-construction stormwater. Post-construction stormwater management basically consists of of water quality treatment systems and water quality detentions and water quantity detention systems. And that's to ensure first of all that you're not dumping pollutants into the system. And that you're not concentrating flow to exacerbate downstream flooding. So the proposed standards for for these post-construction measures are again, is if if your development results in the creation of what a quarter of an acre or more of impermeable area, you have to comply with treatment and detention standards that are established by our our management requirements. The management requirements are outlined in the permit. And we are working on guidance documents that that will walk people through how they how they accomplish that task. And so development projects that fall within Benton County, within the MS four communities, UGB will still be required to to meet the the standards of the adjacent jurisdiction. But the we will have our own standards for those outside of of the outside of the UGBs. Our plan is to implement this, these standards countywide. And the reason for that is that a recent EPA guidance stated that MS fours, like our community, our small community, that that are basically defined by counties will soon be required to implement their post-construction and well, control measure four and five will be required to implement them throughout their their geographical boundaries. And so we are trying to kind of head this off and and establish the blanket the blanket requirements so that we don't have to come back and change the code again in the near future. And a small saving grace project under the quarter acre threshold don't need to apply for any kind of any kind of permits. So on the next slide, can I continue this? The impermeable surfaces are really are troublesome for a lot of reasons. And I I think that I think that you all are probably familiar with these. And what they do is they concentrate pollutants. They collect pollutants and then when you have first rains or first flushes, they take those pollutants and send them in ultra high concentrations into receiving waters. And the best way to to really avoid these post-construction stormwater management requirements, which are which are rigorous and 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 will be challenging to to create is to reduce your your footprint. Remove impermeable features or preserve and establish that or establish natural drainage systems. You can preserve native vegetation. You can remove noxious weeds and invasive vegetation, replace it with with native vegetation. We, any methods that you can use to slow or eliminate runoff are are desirable. And then the ultimate goal is to try and keep as much water as possible on your on your property to infiltrate and act as groundwater recharge. Then the last resort, if you can't avoid creating that quarter acres and formidable surface is to is to detain and treat the runoff with structures and bioengineering. So in the in the next slide, you know, our 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 goal is really to keep our waters drinkable, fishable and swimmable. Those are the three, the three primary goals of water quality in general. And and as these these regulations address that and in truth, these regulations are there to ensure that things I don't think it's it's reasonable to believe that they will clean things up, but it will prevent things from getting worse than they already are. So I think that pretty much covers it for me and I can hand this off to Greg now.
Thanks, Gordon. So our task is to take the requirements from the state DEQ and codify them at the local level in the Benton County Development Code. And so sorry, Eric, I should then the next, I've got a few more slides. The yeah, just the next one from there. Perfect. So we're proposing to amend a portion of chapter ninety nine of the development code that already exists, as Gordon described. We have current requirements for stormwater. There's four main sections. We would just be updating these. On the next slide, I'll talk about the first of those, which is again translating erosion and sediment control during construction. The requirements dropping from an acre down to a quarter acre, which is only ten thousand, just under eleven thousand square feet. As Gordon mentioned, that's going to translate into a lot more erosion sediment control permits. A lot more projects out there are going to require these permits. We're also planning to, in the draft code, close a loophole that currently exists where if you log property, commercial harvest of the timber, that is covered by the Oregon Forest Practices Rules. As far as erosion and all other requirements like that. But then if you've, if you don't replant it, there's a gap in in coverage in terms of ensuring that erosion and sediment are properly handled. So we are proposing to correct that. And then we're taking a lot of details out of the code that had to do with specifically what kinds or type levels of erosion control are needed and putting those into support documents. So rather than having them directly codified, these are like manuals about how to properly do the the required level of of maintenance or erosion and sediment control, put those into manuals that can be updated more readily than through code amendment process. And then we'll also identify situations in which there may be higher levels or different types of best management practices that are needed. So that's about the construction phase. The next slide talks about the post-construction, again, the long-term reduction of runoff and pollutant load from a developed site into the future. And again, our goal is to minimize all of that and hopefully do that without the the regulations, as Gordon described, by having people minimize the impervious surface on their property and take other measures. But when that's unavoidable, that quarter acre of impervious surface will require people to develop a plan and submit that by an appropriate professional that will apply to all of unincorporated Benton County under our current proposal. Currently, it only applies to the urbanized areas as Gordon described. One question that we are working through and actually have a meeting advance later this week to discuss is the long-term maintenance responsibility of these facilities. So it's one thing if it's a single property and you have a detention and treatment facility on it, but if it's a subdivision or a partition or some other multi-property situation where multiple property owners are their development is feeding into a a community or a common facility who has responsibility to maintain that, who has the financial responsibility long term. So we'll be working through some options on that, some using some examples from other jurisdictions. And then the last slide, our next steps. So and we're asking today for the board to formally formally initiate the code amendments. And then staff will be refining those amendments and preparing for a public hearing at the Planning Commission, January third. They will make a recommendation and we have the Board of Commissioners hearing at this point scheduled for February seven. As Gordon mentioned, the implementation due date is the end of February. So we're hoping that we can stick with the schedule, which will have the ordinance adopted by the end of February. And that's sufficient, we believe, doesn't have to be implemented. The thirty day implementation date is, I think, acceptable to DEQ as far as we know, fingers crossed. We're also, so this is just the code amendment side of this. As as Gordon mentioned, this is a significant change in the number and types of developments that are going to be needing permits of this type. And so we're working to develop information for the public as well as our own internal procedures and knowledge base to enable staff in community development and public works to to facilitate these processes. So it's it's a much bigger effort than just what we've talked about today. But wanted you to know that that's going on as well. So thank you. Any questions or discussion?
I have a couple of little questions that, just from my own understanding. Do you have examples of, kind of picture like a point two five acre impervious surface? So is that surface, so is that one, can that be just one impervious surface or can that be multiple ones that aggregate across a bigger?
It it could be multiple, so if you develop a, let's say a four thousand square foot house and a three thousand square foot shop building and a quarter mile driveway and a tennis court, you're gonna be there.
Okay, so is there, it's point two five acre per what bigger piece of land?
Per per ownership per parcel, I'm not sure exactly how we define that, Gordon.
Because like I'm, so my question is like if you have, you know, ten acres and you know, is it fair that they can do up to point two five across their ten acres versus someone else who might have five?
Right, yeah, so I'll let Gordon address this as well, but my my answer, my my response is um, yeah, the quarter acre threshold is regardless of parcel size. Um where it gets more complicated is in what's called a common plan of development. Um where if there are multiple properties involved in a um or multiple projects involved in what is a ultimately a common plan like a subdivision, for example, but there could be other examples as well, um that may trigger that, even though an individual element of that project might not trigger the quarter acre, might not reach the quarter acre threshold. Um but yeah, it regardless of parcel size, um it's the the threshold is the same.
And and these requirements have been in place already in within, say, City of Corvallis or any any larger cities for a while. Correct.
Different, yeah, someone, Gordon, do you have a perspective on other jurisdictions?
Um, in in most urban uh applications, uh uh let's talk about uh City of Corvallis and Albany. Um, their thresholds are significantly lower and um the their thresholds hover around, I think, twenty five hundred square feet and almost all uh all um development is required to do some kind of treatment of their of of their uh stormwater effluent. Um, I should note that in the permit, because we are a county uh listed as an MS four, um there was an exception made uh for the impermeable surface threshold, or originally the 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 phase two impermeable surf- surface threshold was uh five thousand square feet. And because we're a county and because they recognize that some of these uh some of these developments would be in rural areas, uh they increased it to a quarter acre, which in some ways they've made it more confusing because you have the quarter acre of disturbance for erosion and sediment control and then you have the quarter acre of impermeable surface for the for the post-construction stormwater treatment and it I think it's confusing enough as it is and then the this gives the opportunity for the public to kind of conflate the two and it it took me, I I've been doing this for years and it took me a while to wrap my head around it, so.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Is a gravel road considered impervious?
Yes, it is.
Oh, is it?
It is, because it's a compacted rock surface, um it is and actually a gravel road, if it is uh if it is properly constructed, should not be pervious, so.
But what about pea gravel?
If you have pea gravel and it's contained by boards at the edges, it is pervious.
Okay. Very good, uh would anyone like to make a motion?
No, I'll I'll move to initiate amendments to the development code regarding storm water management compliance with Benton County DEQ uh permit conditions.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
One more question, I mean, um this is a topic that, as I understand it, uh that your department has been talking to community members about already, correct? Uh uh in some of the roundtable groups and everything else, okay?
Right, yeah, in fact, there's a a working group uh that Gordon knows much more about than I do, but uh the SWIG.
Yeah, the this the SWIG was initiated in uh, well, we started setting it up last year and did a series of polls and got interested parties and um it resulted in a in a group that I think our first meeting was in April and we've met once a month since then. And it primarily, it's been outreach, education, this is what's coming down the pipe. Uh, the group is can uh composed of, uh we have representatives from real estate, uh local planning. Um, uh a couple of retired engineers, um concerned citizens. Uh, let's see, I'm leaving somebody out, but we have a couple of builders, we have representatives from site construction and uh uh contractors. Um, and uh actually a a member of one of the local road districts and as as this group continued to sort of as we continued to go through the various control measures and what they what the implications of these of these requirements would be, um it became apparent to me that these folks represent uh probably the most informed segment of the public at this point in time to uh to carry their their views forward and so um our final meeting is actually on Thursday night and my my last message to this group is that as 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 being the most informed segment of the public and representing various uh various components of the development community, uh you you should come and advocate for the things that uh for 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 the items that you find to be concerning or in need of attention and so my goal is trying to get some of these SWIG members to come to our hearings and to testify publicly. Um, because I, like I said, I they're the folks who have had this stuff drilled into them once a month for the last eight months or so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you, Greg and Gordon, we appreciate your time on this and all the time to be spent.
We're no, we'll be back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good afternoon. Okay, that brings us to others or anything else for the good of the order before we take a quick break and move into executive session. During none, we will take a short break and come back and go into our executive session.
At what time?
Uh, one o'clock, is that enough time? One o'clock.